Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting on Saturday, May 9, 2020. The time is now 9:02 a.m. With us this morning are the following panelists. Ann Chakello, Vice Chair of the Board of Finance. Ann Santoro, Board of Finance Member. Richard Steele, Board of Finance Member. Peter De Rosa, Board of Finance Member. John Birmingham, Board of Finance Member. And myself, Camille Alberti, Chair of the Board of Finance. Also joining us this morning will be Mark Nickerson, First Selectman of the Town of Eastline. Anna Johnson, our Town Finance Director. And Karen Zemetrick is our Recording Secretary for this session. We have a number of guest panelists today that will be speaking and presenting their budgets. And as each one begins their presentation, I would ask that you state your name and your position within the town. For the attendees out there, there are a couple of notes that I would just like to make. A couple of comments, I should say. This is an informational and an educational session where we will be listening to the presentation of the budgets for the general government side of the budget. We will not be making any decisions today. Again, this is for informational and educational purposes. We have a condensed schedule. We'll go hopefully until just 1:00 p.m. this afternoon. I will call a small break at around 11:00 a.m., at which time I will stop recording. And we should come back 10 minutes after I call that break. We'll try to keep it short so we can get through this really lengthy schedule today. And last of all, I realize that there is a lot of information to cover today. But I would like my fellow board members to understand that we need to ask as many questions as possible so we understand the nuts and bolts of this budget. We are going to be responsible for passing a 70-plus-million-dollar budget probably without the benefit of going to town referendum. So it's very important that we understand all of the details that are presented to us in this budget. So with that, we'll get started with Agenda Item Number Two, which is New Business. We will start with a review of the Proposed 2021 Capital Improvement Plan. I believe Anna Johnson will walk us through that plan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Without, I'll turn it over.
Okay. So for Board of Finance Members, if you, I'd like you to go to the very last page of the Capital Improvement Plan document. I'd like to explain to you what the sources of funds are for this Capital Improvement Plan. The Capital Improvement Plan is a 10-year lookout. Like every year, we look at it during budget time and we update it relative to what we think our needs are going to be over the next 10 years, you know, for planning purposes. So under Funding Sources, Town and Board of Education, in black. Those are dollars that are intended to be in the budget. Although for the Board of Ed, I'm kind of a little misspeaking here, but I'll go over that with you. What's in, would, anything that would be in red are grant sources that we would have. Anything that's in green would be bonds and notes. So these are items that the town would actually be doing financing for. The next color, brown, that's labeled Capital and Non-Recurring Fund. Those funds are a general fund subsidy whereby every year we budget those dollars in the general fund budget. And we will discuss those more in detail when we go over Department Number 724, which is the capital budget in the capital department within the town's budget. Then under the next line, Capital and Non-Recurring Fund, in purple, those are dollars that are from the state LoCIP grant program. So those are projects that we plan to do with resources that we're actually receiving from the state. And we run those projects through our Capital and Non-Recurring Fund. What's the maroon red color that says CNRE Reserves? Those are the funds that we identified earlier within the year in the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund that would be available for us to reallocate to other projects. And then lastly, Other Funds, the blue. What those funds represent are funds that we plan to for various equipment and vehicles through the annual acquisition plan. And included in that number is police. For the police vehicles, which we now collect fees when we do the outside police jobs. And a certain portion of those fee dollars goes into the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund so that we can make future purchases of vehicles. So if we want to go to the first page again, this plan is set up much like the budget is. It identifies each it identifies each department and by the department number that's included within the budget. So we start off with Department 102, which is the assessor. And we all know that we're required to do evaluations every so many years. And that's for funding for that purpose. You'll note that within the plan, it says $130,000. You will also note that in the Board of Selectmen proposed reductions, there was a reduction of $75,000 for this particular project because the assessor has identified a methodology that we would be able to reduce the cost of that. Next, Tax Collector, there's actually nothing in the 2021 year. Engineering, you'll note that's highlighted in the brown CNRE, which means that we would subsidize that. That's one of the subsidies through the general fund budget. In Department 109, Information Technology, that's for replacement of annual town computers. We're asking for 15,000 in the upcoming 2021 year. As we had noted during the process, that we felt that we would need extra resources in the upcoming year. And then we also, in brown, we have a $5,000 subsidy for CNRE for the replacement of town servers. For those of you that have been on the board for a period of time, you recall, we had a server crash a number of years ago. So we thought it prudent at that time to build up the resources so that when we need to replace the server, we have them available. If you notice, the next department with funding requests, Building Maintenance, there are a lot of items in purple. Those are projects that we propose to do using the LoCIP state grants as well as a couple of items that are part of the annual budget subsidy. You'll notice a new department, Department 139, Historic Properties. One of the things last year during the budget process that we tasked the Historic Properties Commission with is to go out and look for grant resources in order to do work specifically on the Sam Smith property. And the commission did that. However, any grant that's available to them requires matching funds. So we thought that's why we included the $10,000 in the CIP this year. The Police Department, Computer-Aided Dispatch System, the motor replacement, and the AFIS Prisoner Processing Machine. All of those items are that maroon red I talked about, meaning we've identified resources available in the CNRE fund in order to pay for those items. One thing I'll say here is, any of the departments that are on today, I think that when they come up to do their budget presentations, they would better to be, they would better be able to articulate the importance of these items. So perhaps when they're doing their budget presentations, they can cover these items as themselves. We do have two items in police. The Waterford Boat, oh, actually, it's the Waterford Boat motor only that we are using the general fund subsidy funds to cover. Niantic, both Niantic Fire, Department 217 and 218, have identified that they really need radio upgrades. And so that's, they each have a funding request there. And there again, we would propose to use resources available in the CNRE fund for those items. And then each of the two departments does have, Niantic Fire has the need for thermal imaging camera and also for turnout gear. They asked for two sets. And part of the Board of Selectmen proposed, recommended reductions is to cut them each back two sets of turnout gear in the upcoming year. And then in addition, Flanders Fire has some SCBA replacement cylinders and some hose replacements in the plan as well. As replacement of their 26-year-old engine tanker. That's an $800,000 request. And that is something that we would look at bonding. Again, I'll defer discussion, further discussion of that to Chief Rex. What's identified in Emergency Management? Those are actually prior year payments which are included in the general fund. When we get to Public Works, you'll notice the very first item, vehicle slash equipment, $365,000. And they're in that blue, blue color. So we would be purchasing them through the annual acquisition program that we have. The two items that are included in that $365,000, if you go to the very last page again, they're identified as a dump truck at $90,000 and replacement of a sweeper at $275,000. Next, we have sidewalk repairs, which is in brown. So that's part of the general fund subsidy into the CNRE fund. We have our annual road improvements at 950,000. And then we have a couple of LoCIP fund identified projects. Maintenance of our town dams and maintenance bridge culvert repairs. And the next item, the next department with a couple of items is Parks and Recreation. They have a utility-style gator and replacement of the director's vehicle requested, requested there. And again, those, we've identified existing CNRE funds to pay for those. The Board of Education. In their plan, I will, we, I will just give you that information. There are three component parts. $238,610. They've identified several types of maintenance work that needs to be done throughout various school buildings. And they would propose to bond those. They spoke to you the other night about their technology plan. That is $1,307,825. They would propose to pay for that with, using the annual acquisition plan, at which they have noted they have $275,000 in next year's budget to pay next year's first payment of that acquisition plan for this technology amount. And then the third portion, there's $35,500. And there are two items. One is some kind of a study they need to do. And there's another one. It has, it has to do with energy efficiency. And they've identified using the LEARN funds within CNRE to pay for those two items. Within the first book that that looks like this, well, actually, the bound document of their proposed budget behind tab number four listed what they originally proposed for the CIP items. Within the book that was sent to you by the Board of Education, I'm not sure, I think it was during this week, that page has been updated to reflect the items that I have just gone over with you. So I think I've kind of covered the plan. I know for returning members, if you understand where, you know, what I was talking about. For newer members, perhaps, you know, this is your first time going through this. I would be happy to answer any questions or make clarifications for you. I think that, one thing I will say that, is that as we go through reviewing other departments within the bit, the budget, I think it's fair to say that you would gain a better understanding of all the different components and the color coding, you know, along. So just, you know, please keep that in mind.
Okay, Anna, thank you. Nice job. I'd like to just make a couple of general comments and then I'll open that up to some more detailed questions. One, I think it's now apparent that this is a long-range plan. So you can see that the projections for our capital needs extend, you know, over 10 years. So just to be clear, the numbers that are cited or referenced in the 2021 column are actual dollars that we have in the 2021 budget. So that's no longer a plan. That means these dollars are within the budgets that we are looking at for this year. And I'm not sure if everybody understands what LEARN funds are. But several years ago, LEARN, the Regional Educational Center, was leasing space at Lilyby Haynes. And, and we received a chunk of change, or I should say, the Board of Ed received a chunk of change for that rental space every year. And they decided to get their own space outside of Lilyby Haynes. So we are no longer receiving that income. I, if I remember correctly, I think it was about 35,000. So those couple of comments I wanted to make and just, I have one question, Anna, for you. On the very last page, you broke out the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund in like sort of a brownish color. And then you have CNRE Resources in kind of that maroon reddish color. So am I, am I to understand, and you had called it reserves when you were referring to it, that maroon color? CNRE, how is that different from Capital and Non-Recurring Fund? Is that the leftover dollars from previously closed projects?
Well, if you recall, there's a pending item on for the Board of Finance to address. And that's where these resources would come from.
Right. So funds that were left over from projects that have been closed out?
Correct. And actually, I see your point. Instead of writing out Capital and Non-Recurring, I wrote CNRE. I abbreviated it. You know, I apologize for creating the confusion.
No, no, that's okay. I just wanted people to understand the difference between the two buckets. With that, why don't we start with questions from any of our Board of Finance members?
I'll start.
Okay, John.
Anna, I have a question for you.
Yes.
You mentioned the the page under, after tab four, that is, that it was redone, updated. The old budget this year.
Oh, yes.
From this book to the new one that was online and we printed out. You said it was on page 12 of the old, the old book.
It might be on page 16 of the new book.
Right. I have the page here from the new book. Now, on page 12 of the old book, the several items that I highlighted that were deleted when you went over to the new book. As an example, say down down near the bottom, this is new tractor, $48,800. That didn't carry over to the new book. Where did that go to?
You know what? I think that those are questions that are better addressed to the Board of Fin, Board of Education for clar, for points of clarification.
Okay, because it was like one, two, three, four. Five items that were in the old book that didn't appear in the new book.
I think it would be fair to say, as they reviewed the budget relative to looking at areas where they could, you know, cut back going into next year. That's why they, they, you know, they reduced them. They looked at their, what they felt the more important priorities are.
So I probably will assume they'll show up in another year.
That's possible.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
John, John, if you'd like a more detailed explain, explanation, I'd encourage you to email Marianna Stevens from the Board of Ed. I'm sure she'd be happy to provide an answer.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for questions on the CIP? Yes, Ann Santoro.
Thanks. So Anna, under, this would be page four of the Capital Improvement Plan under Education. There's an item, 2018-2019 Technology Plan. And it's in the 2021 column for 44,000.
Right. So if you remember, when I went through the pages, I told you that the numbers that were reflected for the Board of Education were not correct. And then I reviewed for you what, what their plan does entail, which is what's articulated on page 16 of the updated Board of Ed book that you received.
Okay, so what, so, okay, so I would find that 35, is it 35,000 dollars for a study? And, and the, the energy efficiency study as well?
Right. Yeah. And the thing is, is unfortunately, on their, on their, the document that they have, it doesn't, it's not, it's not going to be in that particular order. If you would like, I can maybe print that page and highlight what, in different colors, what goes into each of those categories and email it off to the board. Do you think that would?
Yeah, I think between John's questions and the ones that I have, I do think they need to clarify because they had some, they had some new items in their updated SIP plan, which is page 16, the updated page 16. And then you have what you have in this plan. So it would be good to reconcile these. The overall is a, is a reduction, actually. At least from their documentation, from like 1.5 million to roughly 1.4. As the, as you said, as they were going through to reduce budget. But yeah, we just need some help on that because some of these items are just hanging out there.
Understood.
Thank you. That's all I have for now on the, on the Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Ann Chakello?
Hi, yeah. So my question is, I mean, it says the 2020 slash 21 plan. Is that set in stone now? Or will that change based upon what rulings the Board of Finance makes in regards to the budget? Or is that already set?
So actually, during the budget process, it's the Board of Finance that actually, actually finalizes the Capital Improvement Plan that goes out to the residents, taxpayers of the town. So that was a great question.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anna, you might want to point out on the capital plan that many of the items then go through another round of scrutiny, if you will, that it goes, when we have an acquisition from this capital plan, it generally comes back to Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. And by then, we'll be into town meetings again, probably by the time we start purchasing some of these big items. That though we approve the plan, we don't approve the purchase. That's, that's kind of important, that it might appear on the plan. But then when we dive deep into the, the, you know, we have a, we have a fire engine on there. We have a street sweeper. All those will come back to the Board of Finance for final approval, an actual approval of an item later. We're approving a plan now, not the purchase of these items. And that's probably really important for the new people on here, that we're approving, approving a plan, but not necessarily the actual purchase.
Great, thank you.
Camille, you're not.
You gotta unmute. Unmute.
Muted, I think.
All right. Okay.
Mark, however, what we are approving in the 2021 plan is the appropriation of dollars in the current operating budget. And yes, you are correct. When those plans get finalized, it comes through all the rigorous approval process again. But, Ann Chakello, that was a great question because we have the ability to say whether upfront, we want to be, to put those dollars in the current year's operating plan.
Got it, thanks.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, anybody else on the Capital Improvement Plan?
Yes, I would, I don't have any questions, Anna. I thought you did a very nice job of explaining, and I like the color coding. That's really very, very helpful. And Mark, I like your explanation that it's in the plan, but it still goes through another set of processes for actual spend. So thank you both.
Okay. So if there's no further questions on the CIP, we'll start with the General Government Budget Reviews. And the first on the list is Information Technology, Department 109. So who is going to present that budget to us this, this morning?
Joe Brigaud is going to present that budget. It's been identified that we need to enhance our IT focus in our town. And we need to have a comprehensive plan. Joe took it upon himself, as he oversees the IT with so many other departments, to kind of come up with an initial plan. And Joe's going to go through, I think, a PowerPoint this morning, right, Joe?
Yeah, well, well, I am. I just want to quickly mention, there's the budget, 109, which has lines for salary for the the personnel, for the IT supervisor. And then there's miscellaneous supplies. There's nothing changed essentially in that. The bulk of the meat of this budget is going to be the kind of repurposing of, of monies. And we're, just as a kind of general highlight, we're bringing monies from other budgets into this budget. So all the IT resources are in the same place. So with that, I do want to get into the PowerPoint and I'll share the screen here.
Joe, if I could interrupt for just one moment, we do have some attendees on this webinar. Could you please state your position in the town?
Yeah, this is Joe Brigaud, the Director of Public Works.
Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. So basically, this is a PowerPoint to kind of go over the central, the main things. And where we're kind of falling short is we just don't have a lot of staffing. So I put together a PowerPoint that kind of highlights what the issues are. I did send this PowerPoint out to the Board of Finance, so they've seen it best. So I'm not going to go over every bullet item. I'll try to hit the highlights. It's probably about 20 slides, but in everyone's, out of respect for everyone in the process, you know, I want to try to hit the highlights of this and then you can get into some discussion. So, you know, what are, what are we really covering? Is a brief understanding of the evolution of IT in Eastline, because it is applicable. Why is this being brought up now? How are we going to come up with a solution? What is, what is in our fiscal, fiscal year 2021 budget? Star computer involvement, comparison to budgets. So this is the things we're covering in this presentation. So evolution, just, just as kind of a highlight. In 2002, Bill Shear's on this call, but he was, he was assigned as the IT person. And I mean, basically, nuts and bolts, we have one person, one person on staff, Carmen Ames, who's on this call now. She's the IT supervisor. But way back then, we just didn't have a lot of IT in the town. We had town hall, senior center. There was only four computers and the police. And so a lot has changed since. So so now, nowadays, we have a much larger police force. Back then, as I had in the last slide, there was 20, there was four computers back in the police department, back across where the judge approvated is now. Now, every car is, has cameras and MDTs, which are mobile data terminals. Those are laptops. All that's IT, new dispatch software, just all kinds of things in in the emergency services area. And I have a ball at the bottom. I'm really trying to hold questions now and I'll go through this presentation. We can go over it afterwards. But not only is the police chief on this call, but also the fire chiefs and the president of the Angles Association. So a little bit on the town side, the general government hasn't really changed too much, but we still have grown. We have the Nutmeg Fibers, the virtual private net. but we still have grown. We have the Nutmeg Fibers, the virtual private networks, network copiers, online payments. There's just, every department now seems to have a mission critical software. And, you know, second it goes down, they reach out to our one IT person that has to get fixed. So there's just a lot more since the last 16, 18 years to IT, that the list goes on and on of what, what the needs are. So what's, why, what's recently changed on the emergency services side? Although we have gone to an independent force in the last three years, that really is not the issue why we have this IT issue right now. If anything, and kudos to the police chief, we're just finding out about it more. Because in the past, when it used to be the resident trooper system, all these IT issues were there, but the person that was heading up the police department was a state police officer that was not working for the town, I mean, was not a town employee. So now we have a police chief who's telling us, us being the IT department, and me and Bill Shear, what the issues are. So that's why we're kind of finding out. We also lost institutional knowledge. I mean, we've had two changeovers in the Fire Marshal's Office in the last three years. And those two individuals, Mr. Morris and Mr. Taylor, both did a lot with dispatch. One of the PD officers is actually, he's the one assigned, and he's retiring in the next month or so, was the one that always dealt with the cameras in the cars, in the laptops. And as the chief would say, that's really not a position of an officer to be doing. Most towns don't have that, but that's just the way we're set up, because we only had that one staff person. And the emergency services are really, what, what the big part of this presentation is that the emergency services is where we're kind of falling behind as far as in IT, because there's just so much to emergency services now as far as the security and all the technology that they have. So why is this being brought up now? You know, during the recent SIP meetings we had, it got, you know, we, it's good that we get together. We just went over the CIP. We found out from the police chief and the fire chiefs, hey, we're not getting, we really aren't getting 24/7/365 IT support. And that really became an issue. So our, our, it's just, the current IT support with one person is just not working. All town entities really need to kind of be under one umbrella. Right now, the town has our one person, and they do the town hall, they do the community center. We have, we have a consultant that kind of works for us, that helps the emergency services. Board of Ed, Board of Ed does their thing, dispatch does their thing. Just, right now, it's very decentralized. No one is really also looking at IT from a 10,000-foot level right now because of one person. And just in general, how we're set up, things can get away from you because we're kind of dealing with the fire of the day, as opposed to someone really leading the effort. In today's world, we need a stronger IT presence. So what are some of the worst-case scenarios if we do nothing? Because right now, as we currently stand, we're trying to correct the situation. But we are right now very susceptible to cyber attacks, such as ransomware, website hacking. Bill Shear sent me a link of all kinds of places that are hit very close to home, of all these different attacks, cyber attacks, even in local towns. The fire chiefs pointed out, our 911 system could completely shut down. I mean, there's, it's all driven on technology these days. And if we don't get that 24/7/365, and we don't keep the IT going, it could be a real problem. And if the emergency services can't communicate, then they're not going to be able to serve the citizens. So how are we going to come up with a solution? The big thing on this slide is that we knew there was a problem. We just described, we decided to create an IT steering committee to come up with a well-thought-out solution. This has been brewing now for 18 years, and it's not going to get solved overnight. We really don't know what the answers, we have some ideas of what the solution is, but the best way, I think, and what most of the people, I would assume to agree, is you get, you get all the stakeholders together, and you come up with a solution. You first have to find out what your issues are, and you come up with a solution. So we got together, an IT steering committee, and the members of that, First Selectmen, Finance Director, the Public Works Director, the Deputy Public Works Director, IT Supervisor, Police Chief, both Fire Chiefs, and the President of the Ambulance Association. We only had our first meeting on February 7th, so this is really new as far as us trying to address this. And we, then the COVID hit, so we really didn't, we haven't met since, but we only started discussing what our infrastructure was, and what, what some potential solutions are in getting ready. The other problem is, we're sitting right in a budget process of, if we have an issue, how are we going to, how are we going to fix it? What we came up with in the steering committee now, and only our two meetings, is the fact that we, we know there's a problem, we need to get it solved, we don't have the answers, but we kind of need a bridge to get there. And that's what this fiscal year 2021 budget is, is a bridge. So I'm going to quickly, kind of skim it. This is the budget that you guys saw, and what it would show in the bottom line, and obviously Board of Finance's bottom line, is it appears that there's $114,000 increase. But I'm going to show you, that's not technically correct. The yellow is, one of the line items of the current year budget, maintenance of office equipment is $49,980. All those things are in yellow. The new budget breaks out those line items into additional line items to be much more specific, so we can better track our costs, be more transparent to the public, be more transparent to the boards, and have, so we set up a licensing, hosting, and support. All the things in yellow are actually in the existing budget, so nothing in these, in this slide has changed from the existing budget. The next ones in this slide, the green lines are all coming from the planning budget. So if you compare us to other towns and compare our numbers, everything is in one budget in most towns. Ours is kind of, you know, GIS is in one, was in the planning budget. Some of the PD things were in the PD budget. The whole intention, what we're trying to do is bring everything under one umbrella into one budget. So the green ones are from the planning budget, the blue ones are from the PD, that one yellow one, when I say the yellow one, PD email, was, was the only other amount. So our existing maintenance office equipment, $49,980, is, nothing is new in this budget, because we just picked up the PD email. The red is Fire Marshals. And so, in summary, the bottom, the orange, is the only additional request. Now, I know the Board of Finance, and you, as you should, would be like, well, where are those numbers coming out of another budget? And that's really for Director of Finance, Anna Johnson, to show whether, whether she sends you something in email to show you the exact links. But we added, we took all these line items, like the blue ones came all out of the police budget, so they should all be reductions in this year's, this current year's fiscal budget for those specific items, because they're now all under one umbrella. And this just summarizes that the $114,337 increase really is only a $50,000 increase. So why do we have a $50,000 increase? We have one IT professional, as I said, and how we get by in the Town of East Line is we have a local consulting firm that actually acts as our backup, or are even working in cahoots with our IT supervisor to do all the things that are needed. It's Star Computers, they're, they're based out in Iannic, the owner lives in East Line, went to East Line, but is a smart guy and has a talented staff. They work, they do other towns, they do Old Sabre, Preston, they do the Southeastern Cog, Southeastern Connecticut Cog, Block Island. And they've been doing this for five years. So they intimately know our infrastructure, they're working with the town, they're working with emergency services. But right now, this, they just don't have a contract in place, it's 24/7. So what do we have for numbers? We have a town that has an annual contract for $32,750, which I, that contract is based on 400 hours at $81.88 an hour. There's also a contract that Star has with the East Line Ambulance Association, and I saw in the screen before, the President, Dave Baer, is on this call. So the East Line Ambulance is very good in working, working with the town and all these relations of things that they pay for. So right now, and up till a bunch of years, every year, the Ambulance Association has a contract with Star for $33,492, which is billed out monthly. So theirs is just billed on a monthly basis. This does not go through the town, this is not something you see on the budget, because this is something that the Ambulance Association contributes. It just shows that we're kind of disjointed, we're little, we're very decentralized, is that Ambulance Association has a contract, the town has a contract, and we just have to get this all in one umbrella. So what we're looking to do is add that $50,000 to one master contract that we could actually work. So how are we doing compared to other towns? Town of East Line, this year is, our budget's 158, but this proposed is 246. Town of Stonington, very comparable size demographically, their budget's 389, so ours was 240, ours is 158, but theirs is almost 390,000. Ledger's, another town, smaller than us, and their, their IT budget's 372. So it's just showing that we're way under, and they both have, both those towns have two staff people, we have one. So what's our short-term plan? Add $50,000 to the proposed budget to increase the Star's contract, negotiate a 24/7/365 agreement with them, continue to meet with the steering committee, work with the Ambulance Association to come up with a financial agreement. What our kind of goal is to have the Ambulance Association give the town the money as a revenue that they normally are already paying, but then the town is then responsible for the big nut of making sure everything works. So we're all looking at it centrally. And then work with the Board of Ed. The only other thing is that, I know you guys talked, had the Board of Ed speak to you the other day, and I'm not sure whether, I know they have, their biggest thing is IT, so it's having that discussion with Board of Ed, and that would be part of, that would be part of the steering committee. And then be ready to have a long-term plan for the fiscal year 21/22 budget. We just have a few options. We have one IT guru for the whole town. You guys have seen these. The option two is, the Board of Ed does their own thing, and the town hires a director. We need help. And these options that I'm going over are more of a fiscal year 21/22, but that's where we're kind of pointed. And option three is keeping, keeping things the same with a larger IT consulting support contract. But that would be something that the steering committee would, would discuss. Closing thoughts, we have IT issues, it needs to be, something has, this has to be done. The short-term solution we're proposing provides, you know, that bridge. The long-term steering, the IT steering committee is, you know, we love to have the Board of Finance participate. There's already a few members of the Board of Selectmen that are on that, to come up with the best town solution for the town. Want to throw this out there, it just, just makes too much sense to go forward. And there you go. If you have any questions. I know there's a lot there, but a lot, there was a lot to cover.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Thanks for sharing those slides. And those slides will be available to the public because they will be attached to these minutes. So we went through them pretty quickly, but there will be a permanent record of those slides attached to these minutes. With that, I'll open, I'll open the floor up to any questions for Joe Brigall. And Anne Santoro, did you have a question?
Rich Steele has a question.
Rich?
Thank you, Anne. Joe, you mentioned, I, I understand the need, and I understand the, the practice of consolidation, that makes a lot of sense. Our current contract is somewhere in the $30,000s when we talk about the, the police, the fire, and the town together?
66.
66?
Well, we have, we have a contract for $32,750 that the town has, and the emergency services chip in another $33,500. So if you add the two of them up, it's about $65,000 currently. We're proposing to add another $50,000 that will really help us on the 24/7/365 support.
Oh, okay. And that additional $50,000, we've already discussed with Star, so that $115 approximately will give us the 24/7/365 coverage?
Yeah, we haven't specifically ironed out all the details, but we've, we're going over the parameters, and it's something that we can work with, that would, that should work.
Okay. And then the ambulance is contributing what they're currently paying, that will go towards that total $115?
That is the concept, and I don't, I can see Dave in the background, that's something that has to be spent. That's, that's the Ambulance Association's money, and their membership has to, has to approve that. But everything, we've had a very good discussion with them, they're very interested in solving this problem. They've been a good partner for the town in this solution. I don't know, I'm sure if they want to chime in on this, but that seems where we're going with this, but that's not a done deal, because that's something that the Ambulance Association has to agree upon. It looks like they want to, but it just, everything happened with the COVID, and we just weren't able to move that.
Yeah, Rich, this is Dave Baer, so I'm the president of the East Line Ambulance Association. And, you know, as Joe Riley said, that money that's currently being contributed by the ambulance fund that goes directly to Star Computers, certainly there's a desire for us to combine that with the money that, you know, is currently being paid by the town. Under our bylaws, that's something that needs to be approved by the membership. Currently, because of the restrictions, we're not allowed to have a special meeting to vote on that. But once those restrictions are lifted, hopefully shortly, we'll be able to do that, and then hopefully we can move forward. But certainly, the desire is there to move this forward, as Joe outlined.
Okay, thanks. And is the current Ambulance Association contract a 24/7/365, or is it a limited hour as well?
No, so we get, we get a number of hours from them, and basically, when we need help from them, we'll call them. And I think, you know, Joe can speak to this, but one of the things that we've seen is, Star have been working really well with the town and well with the emergency services, but we're not really being fair to them, because they don't have a 24/7/365 contract set up, and yet we're calling on them outside of regular hours.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you both so much.
Any other questions from Board of Finance members?
I have one.
Yes, John?
Joe? Talking about that $50,000, it's on page 33, it's about in the total of 142,750. I'm not disputing the immediate $50,000, but how did you come up with that number? Because it could, it could be less, it could be more, say, in six months or a year or more.
John, it's a very good question. There was no science to that, that was just a kind of a guesstimation, because we know there was an issue. If we came in with 100, we came in 125, we know the sensitivities of, of what's going on every year with the budget, and to throw, throw a bomb like this in the budget and say we need to completely restructure IT. So 50 was kind of a guess, we kind of figured that was about where it was in our discussions with Star. The numbers are working out that way. It is a little concerning just in general, just because IT is such a huge issue. But so long as everyone's on board and knowing this is a bridge, and that we'll have a better solution and better discussion about this for fiscal year 21/22. So this should be enough to get us through the year. You're right, it could be under, it could be a little over. We're going to manage it, we're going to, but being centralized with all that money is going to be a lot better. Right now, everything's kind of all over the place, and we need to really bring it into one, one leadership on this, and have that steering committee really guide the direction of IT in East Line.
I do.
Okay. Any other questions from Board of Finance members? Yes, Anne Chacallo?
Okay, so just a question regarding the, like, how many devices are you talking about? You said you had 24 in the, in the police cars, and then you have, like, due to the coronavirus, have you had increased, like, computers, or like, just kind of like a ballpark? Just trying to get a grasp of what, what you have.
Well, I'm going to say, I'm going, yeah, I'd like the chief to talk about that.
Sure. So, Anne, you know, we have a multitude, and the problem is, it's not just devices, it's networking. It's, we have 20 different platforms in emergency services that require either networks, bridging, hardware, software, so it's a multitude of places. So each car, for example, each cruiser that's out there has a modem, it has an in-car computer, it has an in-car camera system, which then records and downloads the building, it has radio systems. So the cars themselves have a multitude of different areas and platforms that need to be up kept, as well as the dispatch, dispatch centers 24/7/365. So, you know, not just the 911, but the radio systems, the computer CAD system, the bridging out to the fire departments for their report systems, their information. So I can go on and on, there's, there's a kind of multitude of platforms and areas. And that's why we just really need to get that support for those. I gave you a great example of this past week. We have two police crews coming online, Matt Rowland, who has an outstanding job through his career of really bringing in the in-car and in-car camera and computer systems. We had to take him off the road for several days to keep those computer systems up and running. He's retiring May 31st. I have that luxury moving forward. That's why we really need to rely heavily on IT personnel. And Star has, has filled that gap when it's needed, but the contract just doesn't allow that. And that's a good example. The bad example is when we have to call Star at 3:00 in the morning on a Saturday, because something goes down in dispatch, which is critical. That's not their contract now. So if they, for some reason, had nobody available, we would be in a really bad situation, and really be putting people in the community at risk. So hopefully that answered, you know, some of the questions.
So if, let's say you get the call at 3:00, and, you know, you have an issue. So if let's say you get the call at three and, you know, you have an issue and you need help, then is there an extra charge if they come out and try to fix it? Do they do it all remotely?
Well, there has been and and they have done that. And again, they have been amazingly gracious to us and helpful to us. My concern and and they will try everything to do it remotely. If the remote doesn't work, then they will come into the facility and do that. A lot of times what they'll do is remote in, make a quick patch and then in the morning come in to to fix that. My concern and the concern going forward is we don't have that contract with them. So what if one of their, you know, they're a very small business, they don't have somebody on call, so to speak. We could be flowering out there for several hours in the middle of the night having services and aren't being provided. So, yes, fingers crossed, not when things have worked from a risk standpoint. That really, I think, is a little bit too risky for us to continue to take when we realize that possibility is there.
Okay, and then I guess for Joe, maybe this is for you, your question. Like you said, there's also the town hall that they have computers. Is this something that Star also helps with all of those computers also?
Absolutely. Star does help, but and I see Carmen Ames is, you don't see her face, but she's their name. Her name's on the bottom of this. She is our IT supervisor and she really concentrates on town hall, on community center, on the field services building, on the transfer station. I I don't even want to underscore all the things that she does do, but she is. Her office is located at town hall. So if there's any kind of things going on, networking, things like that, Carmen usually addresses those things. She dresses as many things as she can. But when she's overwhelmed with different items and dealing with, say, if Anna Johnson is has something on the director finding. She can't be working in two places at once. She can't be working on PD stuff. So so, yes, we we have a lot of issues at town hall. But we have a staff, IT dedicated staff person and Bill Shear is also on this call. He is the deputy director, but he also does a lot of IT stuff. So town hall and community center, we're we're in pretty good shape, but it's really, hopefully, it showed in that presentation. The emergency services is really needs a twenty four seven and that's why we had to set up for Star to, you know, like the chief says. The way that we're going to set the contract, if we call at two in the morning, there will be someone on call. That's not happening right now. So they they will have to pay their staff. So someone actually will have to, you know, they can't drink. They can't go out. They have to have a phone on them and they're going to take a call. That that's not your typical IT solution.
Okay, so then my other question is if they have like multiple calls, let's say, you know, there's a problem at the police and there's a problem at the town hall. Would Star be able to cover both of them?
Yeah, but I mean, like. Are you talking for the twenty four seven?
Yeah, I mean, let's say there's, you know, Eastline has two different issues going on at the same time. Would they they be able to cover that?
Yes, and there's also Carmen, there's Bill and there's Star. So the team, the IT team will be able to address that. Correct.
Okay.
And it's always going to be, the priority is always going to be emergency services because that is the most critical function.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I don't see anybody. So I just have one question for you, Joe, and then one request for Anna. The question, Joe, is with Stonington and Preston, you referenced that their current. Operating budget for information technology was about a hundred grand more than what you're proposing next year. Do you happen to know if their support covers technology support for their boards of education or is that separate for them as well?
First, the other town was was Ledger. It's Stonington Ledger, just so it's not Preston, but they, no, it's not Board of Ed. Board of Ed is on their own.
In those two other towns, support for information technology resides within Board of Ed, just like we have a separate IT component in our Board of Ed budget. Okay, thank you. And then Anna, I think Joe mentioned during his presentation that you would be the one to be able to. Come up with a list of the other departments from where the sixty four thousand dollars is being saved.
Can I just ask the board in your in your budget books in department one oh nine? I thought we included a a spread that articulated the. The all the funds that we were taking from other departments. So I just want to confirm that you have that worksheet. And it's done in portrait style.
Proposed line items licensing hosting support dash town.
Exactly.
Yep.
So if you look, the first segment totals twenty thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. That portion was all originally in the IT budget and it references the specific line item. The second category, technical assistance, twenty two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That was also previously in the IT budget. The the third segment, other IT services town totaling five thousand eight hundred dollars. That was also previously in the IT budget. The third segment, GIS annual license hosting seventy three hundred dollars. That was previously in the planning department budget and it also references the budget account. And I'll also mention to the board that in the department one seventeen budget narrative. It it says, you know, it does note that seventy three hundred dollars previously in our budget is now in the IT budget. The next section, GIS and new continued development twenty five hundred, that was also in department one seventeen. The last section, police EMD FMO IT support. While it identifies the dollar amounts in what budget it was previously in. It doesn't reference all of the line items, but I'll also note for the board that within the police budget, the dispatch budget, all of those budgets. In the narrative, it does state the dollars that was moved to the IT budget. I did write down all the budget accounts and perhaps when the chief is going over his budget. You can refer, you know, take this sheet out of your books and look at it and it might help you understand everything more clearly. Does that make sense?
It it does. And I and I looked at those numbers and I I still can't. I still can't without having to go. And do a deep dive into all these numbers, come up with the sixty four thousand dollar savings. So, for example, I'll just tell you quickly, if I go to the police department budget and I'm looking at computer maintenance. Two line item two fourteen, I see the budget last this current fiscal year is fifteen thousand and we're proposing another five thousand. So so I guess my question was, well, if we're consolidating all support into the IT department, why is there still five thousand dollars there? But perhaps that is a question that can wait for when we get to the police department. Because there might be other systems or whatever that need supported outside of Star. So I'll withhold on those questions.
You kind of just answered your own question.
Camille, I Camille, just for that very one that you just said that the the police had fifteen and now they have five. If you go, if you go on the the portrait version of the second page, the second line from the bottom shows ten thousand dollars. There you go. Fifteen down to five is that's where that's where the ten thousand from the PD went. I understand what you're saying to consolidating and I guess the police wanted to have that extra five for there. There are miscellaneous items that they have. That it's very critical for their mission to not be like asking permission from someone else's line item. So I think that's why, but that as far as I'm aware, that's the only other IT anything in the budget. But that's just a good example, as you said fifteen and now it's five and that's where the ten is coming from is showing right here.
Yeah, thank you for connecting those dots because.
Yep.
There's a lot of data here. So thank you.
Well, it's a big issue and we appreciate your guys, you know, understanding of what's going on.
Okay. If there's no further questions about the proposed information technology plan, I think we can move on. Is everybody all set on IT? Okay, with that, then we'll move on to department one oh five, the town engineer.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to discuss that one as well and hopefully I'll give everyone a reprieve because in my opinion, there's not a lot here. I I just I I kind of highlighted, but there's there's only there's personal services, personnel services, excuse me. And then contracted operations and operating expenses. The personals personnel services, we have a town engineer, we have a civil engineer. We have an administrative assistant that works in this office. She gets charged seventy five percent to the town and twenty five percent to the water. That's that's it. And and everyone is jamming in here. It's everyone is the amount of stuff that, you know, these people are dealing with all the permitting. They're dealing with, I mean, you got you got Comcast running around town, putting in lines everywhere and going through your neighborhood, Camille, and all these other neighborhoods. You know, that's something that we permit. There's a lot of stuff that our staff is doing. We do everything internally as far as. All on any of the town projects, all our staff, which are great. They they do all everything as far as the survey. They put together the plans. The whole thing now with the purchasing policy. Well, you got to put a package out to bid it out to get a purchase policy and numbers. So our staff has been kind of staked with, you know, making sure we put good packages out to get good numbers. So there's really nothing. There's not much here. It says, you know, the only really increase is is the gross general wage increase. Alliance in the personnel. So if there's any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Joe on the town engineer, department one oh five? Any questions? Okay, I don't see any. So we'll thank you, Joe. We'll move on to the maintenance of the town buildings, department one thirteen.
Fortunately, it still got me. That's why I wanted to. You got me on a few of these, so I apologize. So building billing maintenance, there's more lines here, but the good thing about it is the budget is actually. So this total budget, so I I have the sheet that you guys all have, the the one one thirteen budgets all on one page. With the one hot, one of the highlights just in general is with everything going on with COVID and not the understanding that we really have to. We really had to cut some budgets to for out of respect for the taxes and the taxpayers or town. We did cut five thousand out of the heating oil account. And the reason I say that is now that we've cut that five thousand, this budget is actually below last year. If you take the five thousand out of the last line, operating expenses, four hundred utilities, two thirteen. If you drop that down from eighty five thousand two fifty eight down five thousand dollars, the total budget seven oh one four oh six. Which is point three five percent less than last year. And I understand it would be nicer if it's lower, but I think the goal is to try to keep these budgets flat as best as you can and that's where we're at. We're actually lower. One just side note, just to let you know, on the first line, custodians up top, why the number is less. In in this current year's budget, we increased weekend coverage at the community center. The parks and rec in the library, parks and rec especially Saturday, has all kinds of activities on that building. And in the past, we've never had anyone in the building that's no staff person that's opening the building, closing the building, cleaning the bathrooms. Doing all the things that those things and it became a security issue as long as a, you know, we get a call at one o'clock. It's, you know, someone, some Johnny threw up in the bathroom and we don't have staff on board. So that that so we actually in this budget, I actually cut out the weekend coverage. And that's got to be the and that's got to be paid for by Parks and Rec's activities on Saturday and the library is supposed to be paid for on Sunday. So if that's why that number is less, because I'm trying to have it paid for by the user fees. For you people that are using it on the weekends. Really, as far as I don't think this, when we have that ten percent increase in fire protection every year, which. That's that's a bill coming from a from the Water and Sewer Commission. And again, just to remind, especially the new members of why we would increase that by ten thousand. About fifteen years ago, the town used to charge the the water department used to charge the town seventy thousand a year. For for having fire hydrants in town for fire protection. And again, fifteen years ago, that number was dropped from seventy thousand to fifteen thousand. And it was at that time, the water department was strapped, had all kinds of cash and the town was strapped. So that's what is my understanding. So in the law, I've been here seven years now and every year, the water department is asked to continue to kind of. Bring that back up more in line with what it used to be, but you obviously you you can't just do it all at once. So that's why that ten percent. It sounds like a high amount as far as a percentage amount, but that's what, you know, for the members that have been on the commission, they on the on the board. Board of Finance, they've seen that every year. So that that's a little explanation, but everything else is pretty much every line is pretty much flat. If there's any questions. Oh, one one last thing is there's nothing in this bill budget for the public safety building. That's that's all being carried in the contingency. Just just to let you know if that's a question that comes up is there's nothing in here for that.
And you'll see that next.
Any questions on the maintenance of the town buildings?
I have.
Yes, Anne Santoro.
Yeah, Joe, just a couple of questions. The fire protection service. Testing of the hydrants and servicing of the hydrants rather. So what company provides that service?
We do. The water, well, we do. It's my other hat. It's the water department. I actually, I'm the water. I oversee the water and sewer department. So we, you know, you see, you see all those hydrants getting flushed out there and. You know, we have about eight hundred hy- hydrants in town that, you know, if if a fire comes out that the fire department comes running, they hook up to a hydrant. And the and the water department is responsible for maintaining those.
Okay, so it just seemed by by the narrative, it almost seemed like it was in part farmed out or something, but I guess not so.
Well, it's farmed out to the water department. The water department is not the town. The water department is a separate entity, an enterprise. That actually is not paid for by the taxpayers, is paid for by the ratepayers. It might be a different pocket, but it's not. It's a separate company.
Yes, I I understand that. It just it it just struck me as is there someone else assisting? Okay.
No, it's us.
Okay, no problem. Okay, I had a question about the heating oil and propane. And, you know, you did reduce it by Board of Selectmen voted on that as well. So as you are well aware, I'm sure, you know, the price of oil is pretty much sunk. And there's a worldwide glut of the product. So can we reduce even more or is it not prudent to do so? And is this part of your lock in, you know, formula here, using that lock in contract to to come up with this figure as well? When does that lock in happen if you're going to take that route again? So that's like questions in one, Joe.
Yeah, and and I'll have three parts to your two questions. There's three. There's there's three elements to the, three elements to the heating thing. There is there is fuel oil, there is propane, and then there's natural gas. Natural gas is a community center. And so that 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 there's no, it's that that ever source provides that. Then there's propane. That's the field services building, which which highway and parks and rec is at and the town hall. And that is is locked in. We got a fantastic rate of a dollar two this year. That was that whole debate that I had with the Board of Finance about trying to use some extra money last year to get all our purchase, all our tanks so that we could. If if you don't, if you don't own your tanks, you can't bid your your propane out. So we own all our tanks except a few, the one at the. Flanders Fire where where I need to address, but so we got a really good rate as far as fuel, as far as fuel oil.
That's what I'm.
We 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 always try to get the best pricing, but and we have not locked in for next year, which is good. I talked to Dick Gata, but fuel oil is one of those things that I want to get the best price, but. There's no propane vendor in town. There's no natural gas vendor in town. There is a vendor in town, is Guy's Oil. So I always, we always try to give them the best, the best, try to get them to give us the best price because it's one of our taxpayers. So I'm I'm going to be working with Dick Gata. I also pull the fuel with the school. And talk to Marianna Stevens about get the best pricing. I haven't found out what the pricing is for next year. Because typically, it it typically is hard. If you go to a company like Dime or East River or something like that, you can get pricing right now. Sometimes Dick, because he's a local company, it it takes a little longer to get that pricing. But the problem with using these these other vendors that aren't from town is that you're locked in to buy a certain amount. So if you buy fifteen thousand gallons and you don't use it, you have to pay for the rest. And that's what the Board of Ed is facing right now because they had a company that they got a better price than me at first. But then now Guy's Oil isn't requiring me to use all the fuel. So it's 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 kind of a. I mean, we constantly talk to Dick Gata. I constantly look at the fuel prices. The winner, we try to find the best price for town. I can't answer to say that we, I can drop this because I'm already dropping at five thousand. If if the Board of Finance wants to drop it more, I mean, I don't know how it's going to be. This was a very light winter. I mean, is next weekend, next winter going to be really cold? I even actually track the winter temperatures to see, you know, well, this winter was thirteen percent less than last winter. And it's but if if they want to dip into contingency, if we do have a bad winter, but I'm comfortable with the eighty thousand. The five thousand reduction, if they want to reduce anymore, I just, if we go over it, we go over, you still got to pay for the fuel. So.
But Anne's question was because of the low prices, can we reduce it? We just did through the Board of Selectmen, the reductions you've received. We just did through the Board of Selectmen, the reductions you've received, that was why we reduced it.
Yeah, that that five thousand was really because I know we can probably get better pricing.
Right, okay, so so my question, and I'm aware of that, I I understood that you, yes, the Board of Selectmen, as I said. Reduced, uh okay, the reduction that you suggested. My question is just, as time is going on here, and it's even more oblique uh cost for oil. You know, for that market and for that pricing, would, you know, would your mind change at all? That that's my basic question.
I'm com- I'm comfortable with the fi- I'm I'm comfortable with the five thousand reduction, but if we want to further reduce it, I can't. There's pricing and then there's usage, so. Might get better pricing, but then what if it's ten, twenty percent colder next winter, then my line's gonna go over. So I'm comfortable where it's at now, because of the of the prices in the world, dropping at five thousand, anything less than that, I'd be getting concerned. But that's a, that's a board board question, uh board answer, if you want to reduce it.
I understand your analysis, it's just a matter of that, you know, the 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 deep cut in that that price and just trying to. You know, uh you know, everything's a moving target that we're doing budget-wise, and I think all the members of the board would agree with me on that. You know, the so much that you were, you know, sort of expected fixed costs, you know, are questionable. And uh this is definitely one of them, and it's just what I'm trying to glean from from my questioning is. Yes, are you comfortable and would you stay with that price, or would you consider something else? So so that's where I'm I'm going with that. I have a different question, just quickly, on uh the cost of cell phones and cellphone service. I think you had a nineteen thousand, five hundred dollar figure in there, do I have that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so can you break that out in any way and tell me about how much is um roughly, how much is service versus the. Phones that you had to buy for uh for your staff?
Yeah, I'm looking it up on my computer right now, because I break all that down, so um. That the that phone, um it's the, it's the phones for Town Hall is about twenty-six hundred uh twenty-six hundred. The cellphone bill for the town's about four hundred. See, I pick up the cellphones for almost everyone in town, except for emergency services. So um whether it's whether it's planning, whether uh whether it's um. Parks and Rec, uh there's a bunch of phones, so uh fifty-two hundred is Verizon. We had to pay twelve hundred under the Nutmeg Network for the fiber. And then there's ninety-three hundred for uh the Mitel for um for the vo- uh voice over internet. So um that's, that's how it all, I mean, I I have it all detailed breakout on my screen right here.
Just wanted to get a sense of how much was cellphone cost in that, because that.
So cell phones is forty, is fifty-two hundred out of that number.
Say again, I'm sorry?
Fifty-two hundred.
So, and I would imagine that those phones would last for a bit of time.
Most phones are um, most of our town phones are three to four years old. I have a seven right here, a lot of, some of ours have sixes. Um if if for some reason their phone dies, we try to get them eights. You know, we, uh you can get through municipalities free phones for, um so we don't usually have to pay a lot for a phone. We just have to make sure they have a um case and stuff like that that protects the phone. So um the buying new phones is not much of this. Um I do reserve about five hundred dollars, just just in case. People's phones um, you know, get damaged for some, for some work-related reason.
Okay, tha- that's it for me, Joe, thanks a lot, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, um I'll ask my question at this point then, Joe. I'm looking at line item. Four hundred utilities, two twelve, water and sewer. So I know that you have put a plan in place to cap the increase for the ratepayers at two percent every year. For the water and sewer users.
For water.
For water, okay.
I've been trying, I mean, I've been trying to cap, I've been, I've been trying to keep sewer rate, right, sewer was flat this year.
Right, try to cap it at two percent. So my question is, the town is a customer of water and sewer. Why is there a nearly a fifteen percent increase for the town?
Well, it's because there's the rate and then there's the usage. So it it's, if the usage is more, I I I have that up right now as well. It's like, say at the community center, if they use twenty percent more water, fifteen, I don't, I don't control usage at these buildings. We 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 pay bills at the community center, that bill is about um this uh this, this year, it's about. Six thousand dollars for water at the community center. And then uh at the old garage at Twelve Roxbury, we pay the bill, Flanders Fire Department is about seven hundred dollars for the water bill. The Grand Street, Nine uh Fire Department, the Grand Street, Emergency Dispatch has a bill, their bill's about five hundred dollars. So Town Hall's bill's about five hundred, Field Service Building is about two thousand dollars, because of what, we wash all the town trucks. So so there's, there's a rate and a usage, we're we're seeing higher usage um for whatever.
That's what, that's what I wanted to hear. Why would the usage be higher this year over last year? You talk about the community center, I believe the library actually scaled back on some of its hours that it was open, why? You know, this, and this is a projection for usage, okay? So you may say that there's been an increase in usage over the past couple of years, but why are you projecting a fifteen percent increase in usage?
I'm not projecting an increase per se, I'm projecting of what, this is what, right this year, our our bill should be coming in right around. Thirteen thousand this year, so I'm project, you you don't see that here, because what you're looking at is nineteen. The actual expense in this is you're looking at is for la- is for last fiscal year. And right now, I I don't have it in front of me, but I believe we've already gotten bills for seven thousand dollars uh for the first billing for November billing. And I ca- I don't know exactly why some of these buildings have more usage, um we do ke- kind of keep um as best as we can. But um I don't control all the, what what happens, all these buildings, or what what they're using it for. Is that the, does that answer your question? I mean, I I I know it'd be better if I had exactly why that, say, Flanders Fire Department is up ten percent or was up. I'm just knowing that right now, we're trending this year, in this calendar year, fiscal year nineteen twenty. To be about thirteen thousand, that's why I put that number. So the budget reflects where we're trending this year.
Well, it's really hard for us to tell when we look at the actual budget books, so I'm looking at. Looking at the March thirtieth actual financial statements, and. There doesn't appear to be actual bills being recorded, there's an encumbrance to make up one hundred percent of the budget balance. So it's not clear to us how much is actually being used this year. Only that a certain amount has been used and that we're encumbering one hundred percent of the projected budget, so.
Yeah, I'm looking.
We we can't tell that we're over budget, in other words, at this point.
Yeah, I'm looking it up on MCSJ right now.
So um at the end of um April, we paid seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and change.
And that's a six-month bill, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, so um what I'm looking, I don't know what you're seeing and you're seeing, but the current budget this year is eleven thousand, three hundred forty, we all agree that. So far, the the um, the no- the November first billing, we paid out seven thousand, four hundred forty-five. So what is that? Um sixty-five percent of um, the November bill is usually higher than the May bill, because that encum- covers summer.
All right, let me, let me try this again. Our books are showing that we are one hundred percent at budget uh for water and sewer. So I guess the question to Anna would be, I see that we paid that seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five, it was encumbered, maybe the bill was actually paid. But are we truly over budget for this year? And if we are.
Well, because I I haven't, I haven't. So I haven't got those, I haven't got the bills yet, the bills, it's May, May first, the bills just went out, um I got my bill the other day, uh a few days ago.
Okay, Joe, this isn't a question for you, this is a question for Anna. Anna, we, we're at one hundred percent of the budget for water and sewer this year.
So basically, at the beginning of every year, we have a list of how we do um initial encumbrances. So for the water and sewer, we would, at the beginning of the year, encumber a hundred percent of that. So at this point, as Joe indicated, we've paid the November bill, the May bills are just coming in and getting distributed. So by the end of May, we'll have a better picture as to whether or not we've expended a hundred percent. Or um if we're going to need more.
So you're saying when we receive the April statements, Anna, that will still be one hundred percent at budget?
I'm saying, once we receive all of the bills, um the May bills for water and sewer, um we're, we'll. Okay, so once you receive, yes, we'll still be at a hundred percent, but like, very shortly, we're gonna know whether or not. The um amount we budgeted for this year, which is the eleven thousand, three hundred and forty, whether it's sufficient. Or or um we're gonna be over budget, because we're.
Okay. So if we're over budget and you have to, would you have to come to us and and we would have to appropriate funds for that overage to cover that water and sewer? How would you, how would you cover that?
Can I answer that, Camille?
Sure, Joe.
This happens all the time with with utilities, you don't know whether it's electric, hot, heating, or water and sewer. So if I'm projecting to be over by seventeen hundred, in all reality, I'm probably gonna have to do a transfer. Put in a transfer to Director of Finance to take seventeen hundred out of another account, because I never asked for more money. So you, if I don't ask for more money out of this budget, this department, it doesn't go to the Board of Finance, it's an internal tran- transfer that you guys see. But in more than reality, because it was a lighter winner, um I probably gonna have heating money left in the account. And I'm just trying to assess that right now, because I'm still getting bills, so.
Yeah, so this will become, this will become part of the uh departmental transfer uh. Numbers that that we will see towards the end, at the end of the year, and, okay, I understand. And I'm hoping, you know, that we do have enough money to cover some of these overages, but. We've only got a few more days before we start deliberations, and we as a Board of Finance have to decide if that's a reasonable increase, fourteen and a half percent. Based on usage next year, that, of course, we have no control, but we're not growing. Other than maybe the public safety building, if that comes on board, maybe next spring.
One of the things I could do, if you want, is I could get an analysis of the um, because there's the bills and then there's usage. And so I could get an analysis of the actual usage of all the buildings. I I, as I said, I'm looking at a spreadsheet now from sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. My my discussion before was that I'm paying bills on about ten different town buildings. And if if a bill is ridiculously out of line, I'll like, hey, we might have a leak there. But nothing is really ridiculously out of line, however, there might be, if every, if every building is maybe up five, seven percent. You know, they just might have more usage, but I I haven't tracked the specific usages at the buildings. I certainly could do that, it's just, there's a lot of different things going on right now, so um I can get that information if you'd like to see it.
Okay, um I would, uh sooner rather than later, since we start deliberations next week. So so thank you for uh that that detailed explanation, I'll look forward to the additional um support of that line item. And I'll just say, for clarification purposes, you said, Joe, that you did negotiate an oil. A contract that is charging us one dollar and two cents per gallon?
Propane.
Propane, one dollar, what is the oil price?
I don't have one, we are not locked in, which is good, it kind of aligns with Anne Santoro's uh comment. We're not locked in for next year, and I talked to Dick Gata the other day. Um and I was gonna work with the Board of Ed to get the best, the the only building the Board of Ed has last for, left for fuel oil is is Nine X Center School. They they usually use about twenty-six thousand gallons, and I I use about fifteen thousand, so if we put the two of ours together, it's forty-one thousand gallons. Um and we're working with Dick on getting pricing now.
Okay, I would expect, as I'll support what Anne Santoro said, this time last year. The uh price per gallon of oil was in excess of sixty dollars a barrel. I think you might have noticed that we dropped into uh, you know, they were paying people to take oil away, so to speak. But right now, I think it's somewhere in the teens, so it's twenty-five percent of the cost that it was last year. I would have expected to see a larger savings in that line item also, but um.
Well, well, don't don't forget, I I actually put these numbers in November.
Right.
And 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 that was, that was not the case, it's in the middle of winter. And typically, I like to lock in in the winter, because what if it's, I mean, for, a- and if if any of us knew how to buy oil, we wouldn't be on this call. We'd be on an island in the Caribbean. It it's a very hard market to figure out. So I watch this stuff all the time, and typically, I've already locked these numbers in, because I don't like to gamble on this stuff and lose. Because, you know, if the world flipped the other way and it was, you know, five dollars a gallon, we'd be really in trouble, so.
It's a good time to lock in now, Joe.
I'm talking, I talked to Dick Gata, and, but I want to lock in with the Board of Ed, because then they're gonna save more than we are, because they get more fuel.
Right, right, okay. That's all the questions I have for uh Maintenance of Town Buildings. Does anybody else have any questions on that department? Uh, yes, Anne Chakello, Anne Chakello raised her hand.
Yeah, just a quick one, Joe, so are you gonna see, do you, do you foresee any savings just based on the COVID nineteen? That buildings aren't gonna be used, and that you're gonna have some savings there? That's, that's what I was kind of thinking, because the, I mean, as it is, you know, um. The schools have been out, and they may be out again, you know, in the next few months. So I didn't know if that, you know, has been thought about, or.
Um, that's tough to gauge, I haven't really seen the the bills come in yet, I I know that Town Hall's still. You know, we still, people have been coming in here, the community center might be somewhere to save, because, I mean, that, I mean. The bill for, believe it or not, the bill, the electric bill for the community center is like nine thousand dollars a month, that's a lot of money. But there's a lot of stuff going on there. Um, so um, eh, it's hard to tell.
Okay.
Okay, John Birmingham, did you have a question?
Yeah, Anne just took my question.
Okay.
My question was, with the, with the buildings and the schools shut down, I would think it'd be less usage as far as water and sewer?
Well, you you said the schools, this, this, the schools are not in this number.
Okay.
The water sewer number, this is for town, this is for town, but the schools are separate.
Okay, take the schools out.
Yeah.
Talking about the town, Town Hall.
Well, 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 if you go, Town Hall might be down a little bit, but Town Hall's, uh Community Centers could be down, it's hard to tell. PD, PD's still going to work, fire's still work, fire stations, emergency dispatch is still there. So.
Libraries closed.
One, you could have some savings as a community center, uh but again, it's it's still hard, we won't know that until. We won't know that until, um, because we already did the readings until December, of what the usage are, the way our meters are set up.
All right.
Okay, so we're for all set on Maintenance of Town and Buildings, everybody all set? Let's move on to uh Department one twenty contingency, I'm thinking, Anna, that's, that's your area. I'll unmute you.
Yeah, okay, so um uh, we have two, two areas um in in this budget. First of all, I'm happy to say, we do not have, we did not have to budget anything um in the payroll contingency, because. For the first time in I don't know how many years, um we have um all of our um collective bargaining agreements in place. So um we're good on that one. The um, we have the the Town General Contingency, and then we did a new Public Safety. Building contingency, because we just thought, since the the bill, the facility wasn't completed, that it made sense to put. What we thought it was going to cost for the public safety building. You know, in a contingency account, and then at the point when the building, the facility opens, then we come and we get, we do a transfer. To get, you know, to get the funds that we need. The Board of Selectmen, however, did um make a reduction in in the contingency. They felt um that the building was going to open later than the original um estimate. I believe in your budget books, we did include um like a spreadsheet, it's done in portrait, that showed. The original amount of the one sixteen, one fifty. Um I did um speak with um Mr. Baga the other day. And based on the Selectman's um reduction to fifty-eight thousand, he did do um another estimate. And um we believe that um we can make that fifty-eight thousand dollars work based on um what we believe. You know, getting the police in that facility will, when that will be. And I'll just um remind the board that anytime we're going to spend funds. And I'll just remind the Board that anytime we're going to spend funds from these contingency accounts, we do go through both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. So these are board vetted expenditures, if you will.
Anybody have any questions for Anna regarding the contingency and the new account that was established for the Public Safety Building?
I have one, Anna. The, the 58,000, I know that's a reduction, you know, it was doubled. Is that for custodial fees only? Is that the, the category, custodial services, rather?
So that included custodial. And then we also, we also looked at supplies for the, and the heating and electrical bills as well.
Okay, so supplies, heating and electrical, okay, and the custodial, okay. Because I think when, the conversation was kind of focused on the custodial, I think at a recent Board of Selectman meeting. But okay, that's, that's fine. Thanks.
Anybody else? So I, I just have a, a quick question. In my mind, it seems like it would be a wash if we're, if we're looking for additional help for custodial service at the new Public Safety Building, we should be saving that from the building that they're currently in. Is this additional help because of the additional space that we're getting that needs to be covered? Or is this just while both buildings need to be maintained?
I think I'll defer response to that question to Joe because he's more of an expert there.
Okay.
Even though it might seem on the surface of it's a wash because we have an existing PD, you might recall or not recall, but about two years ago, the building manager's budget got cut, the 20-hour temp position. So what I'm getting at is that we don't go to the, the existing police department very much right now. We go three hours a week. It's, it's under, it's underserved. But right now, what, what, well, during COVID right now, we're going there every day, twice a day because they're, they're obviously emergency services. We got to make sure that, you know, their building is clean. But in, before the pandemic, so we weren't, we don't want to go into this new building that's 15, three times the size of the existing building and go there three hours a week. It's just not possible. Then the other thing is the dispatch. Dispatch is in the old firehouse right next to Flannery School. And that's a very small space. So I would have to say that to go into there thinking that we're only going to give this new building three, four hours is kind of, would be a disservice. So. And I have, you know, not to belabor today because obviously you have so much on the table, but I've looked at all the buildings that we look at and how we currently cover them. And it's the Town Hall probate, the existing PD, the Community Center Dispatch, and the Field Services Building. And then I looked at how we could cover them adequately in the future. And basically, you do need more staff, but it's, I'm showing a 27-hour person non-benefit, keep it under 30 hours, and rotating some staff so that we can keep all these buildings to the, to the, to the level that we, we want to, that we, that, that these, that these buildings deserve. So it was very important to look at this analysis. I'm more than willing to share it through Anna as far as this analysis of how we're covering all these buildings. But it's, it's more than just saying it's a wash.
Yeah, I understand the additional need based on the additional square footage. You know, I also understand maybe that could have been twice as high before it got reduced by the Board of Selectmen because.
Well, one, one of the reasons it was twice as high, originally, I was looking at having more coverage, but I cut that back. But the other thing is the fact that, you know, bear in mind, right now, we're sitting at May 9th, but that building is, for all intents and purposes, not going to open up on July 1st. So when I first did the analysis, I figured it was going to be sometime in August. And at this point, I'm looking at probably the analysis is looking more like April 1st. So you don't need custodial coverage. So that was all part of the analysis that, again, Anna was mentioning that I detailed, that breaks down the, the $58,000, very little of it is custodial help because you only talk in three months. You got it. It's the electricity, the power, getting all the custodial supplies and any of the kind of the odds and ends things on a 15,000 square foot used area is, is, we wanted to make sure we had that covered.
Right. So I would say that that $58,000 is really what I would consider to be startup costs of this new facility. And then when we consolidate and when we roll forward, you know, then we might be able to see those savings again. But these are additional costs above and beyond what our normal structure would typically require at this point.
In that, in that figure, Joe, isn't the electric bill, the propane costs, the air conditioning, and all that is built, built into the 58,000?
Yeah, for, for the first, for the first nine months, say if you do open on April 1st, you're still going to actually have the existing police station. You have to pay for electricity for first nine months. And that's, by the way, electric heat. So the existing building, so all that's factored into the numbers. And we're pretty comfortable, I shared that with Marcus, shared with Anna, that that 58 will work. We're not going to go into that behind the eight ball. But yeah, and then we'll have a better understanding of our true costs once that up building starts operating. I have no idea how much electric use is going to do. We, it was just the best guess of what it looks like it's going to be. And, and be able to use the really good propane, the dollar four for next year is definitely going to help us a lot because that's a propane building.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions regarding contingency? I don't, I don't see any hands. So with that, we'll move on to Public Works, Department 317. Joe, you're on again.
Yeah, you, you still got me. This is hopefully the last, you have to see of me. So, big picture, it, it is one of the bigger budgets in, on the town side. As proposed, I was proposing a budget, which in front of you was at 3,778,958. That's, that's on the second page of your sheet. Just, just to let, and that was, that would have been a $54,000 increase, or 1.45% increase over the prior, or over this current fiscal year. But just like everything else in this budget, since COVID, we all were, you know, we all understood of what, what this dealt with and what our taxpayers are going to be faced with. So there are cuts that you guys were given. And in this budget, we cut 33,914 out of our salary line. Right now, we're down two employees. We're looking to bring up one back. But with the, with the 24th employee of the Highway Department, we're proposing not to bring, to hire that person till next spring, till next March. That's how we're saving the 33,914. We're taking 15,000 out of traffic calming. I'll talk a little more about that line. Taking 5,000 out of storm materials. We had a lighter winter this year, so we're pretty full right now in the dome. So I was comfortable taking the 5,000 out, knowing that we got through the winter. And then another 2,000 on the streetlights because we, we've been doing some stuff internally to save some money. So all in all, that was $55,914 in cuts, which then makes our budget less than last year, less than this current fiscal year. So our budget is $1,705 less than the current budget or 0.05%. So again, I think that's the goal, my understanding of trying to keep flat budgets, and that's where we're at. So a quick kind of run through of the things, we have two, we have two line items that are new. One of the ones that was called traffic calming measures, as you're probably aware, probably not telling you anything new, is the biggest complaint in town is people speeding. You hear about it all the time. And then they call them, they want all kinds of, they want speed bumps, they want all kinds of crazy things. In my opinion, the best thing you can put up is these digital speed signs because people do slow down. Plus, those are, if you drive by, like you go down Society Road, that sign right by Lily B. Haynes, that's a smart sign. It's taken, it not only is keeping track of the, the volume of the traffic, but it's also to keep in track of your speed. So we can download the information out of that report, out of that machine, it's Bluetooth, and we can send that, Victor Benny, he's not on this call anymore. But and my staff gets that information and they email it to the police. So if the police can track the trends and say, you know, it looks like, you know, every morning at seven in the morning, someone's going 75 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone, they can, they can better deploy speed traps based on these signs. The reason I originally asked for 20 is I was hoping to get, these signs are like 3,000 each. So I was trying to get six or seven of these signs. But knowing what everything's going on, it is a new line item. We cut that from 15, from 20 back to five. So I'd like to get two of these signs and keep deploying around town. And our goal is to get more of these in the future because I think they, it's the way of the future of trying to get people to slow down. But, you know, everyone's always telling us, hey, why aren't you working on speed? And we don't really have a line item. The other line item is for, is for tree ward. And just as a quick on these, by state statute, that every town is required to have a tree warden. The tree warden is responsible for all the trees in the town right away. So people might not even aware of this function. But it's, you know, we have 114 miles of roads in town and with all the dead oak trees, with the gypsy moth devastation and all the dead ash trees with the emerald ash borer. If you drive around town, trees are a huge issue. For a long number of years, Bill Jezerski of WJ Tree has been the tree warden. Before Bill, his father, was the tree warden. Bill unfortunately passed away in, in last November. I don't know of any towns, unfortunate, well, I don't, there's no other towns that have our kind, or had ours kind of set up with a tree warden, was a tree contractor. And I'll give all the respect in the world, Bill Jezerski was fantastic for the town. But, and, and he did everything on an honorable basis. But it's, it can, it can be seen as a conflict of interest having the tree warden and also the tree contractor that cuts down the tree. Bill did not get paid to be the tree warden. However, he was the tree contractor and every year about 20, 25 to $35,000 we spent on trees all went to his company. So by changing the structure, when Bill passed, we could actually put this work out to bid, which would be more in line with the, with the purchasing policy. You can't really have a tree warden as a tree contractor and then bid to work out because then if the tree warden doesn't get it, then why is he doing the work? You can kind of tell the dilemma. So state requires that you have two qualifications to be a tree warden. One is to be a licensed arperist in the state of Connecticut, and one is to be, gone to the deep, the tree warden school and pass their exam. Last I checked in the state records, Bill Jezerski was the only person in the town of East Lime that had a licensed arperist. So it's not like just anyone can be, yeah, I want to be a tree warden. It just doesn't work that way. I did go to tree warden school a few years ago and pass their exam. So I was qualified for this, for the position. So that, with regards to 6,000, the state provides, and their statutes allows tree wardens to be compensated. And that, that's, that's, that's being identified as a stipend. Right now, flat out with water and sewer and public works. And, and I'm also starting to manage internally the streetlights to save the town money. I mean, so there's just a lot of things going on, especially water and sewer that, adding the tree warden stuff. So I, I talked to the, because of my qualifications, I talked to the first selectman and he wanted to appoint me as a tree warden.
It's a difficult conversation that Joe's having because it's about himself. But Joe is helping us out as the only person in town who is licensed and able and has certif, certification to be the tree warden. And, and we'll separate that from our tree contract, which really technically violates our purchasing policy. We should be going out to bid for tree work. It's, it's $35,000 a year in tree work. We should be getting the best price. Joe has taken this on. We're going to give him a $6,000 stipend. I'm grateful for that. Other towns have arborists that are not the public works people. And Old Lime, I know the fellow very well. It's what he does. It's, it's his living. And he does this in his town, but he's not a tree cutter guy either. He's, he's a, he's a landscape architect or something. So he, he steps in and does this work. Joe is graciously stepping in to do this for us. We're going to give him a stipend. If an opportunity comes up for someone else to relieve him of this duty, we will consider that in the, in the meantime. But he's going to take up some of his weekend and do this work for us.
Yeah, that was the, I mean, it's just that it has to be done. It's a huge responsibility, you know, especially all the dead trees in town. So that, I, I didn't want to go too much, but I think it helps to have a little more of a history that this is just not, there, there's a lot to this. Being the tree warden with all the responsibilities, there's a lot to that. So that's, that's a new item on there. If you go through the rest of the budget, there's a reduction in the scare tipping fees because we're, we're, we have, we're seeing a downward trend in, in trash volume in town. That's a good thing. The operating expenses telephone account, I know it's not a big increase, but just want to kind of happily tell you what we, why there's an increase is we've now deployed cell phones in our trash trucks because we constantly getting people, why didn't you pick up our trash? Or why is this? Why is that? Now it's the protocol. If a driver drives, comes up to a trash and the two cans are together, they're next to a car, they're full of metal and they shouldn't be, they take a picture, they pull over, so they're not driving. They take a picture and they email to, email to the office. It's been working great. The person calls up and we have a picture. This is your can. I mean, do you want to see your can? This is your can. And so that's, that's the new thing is we have three cell phones in our, in our frontline garbage trucks. In the supply lines, everything else is the same. I did identify, as I said before, streetlights. You know, this current year was a 220, it's dropping to 214. I dropped another 2,000 because we used to have a company manage it. And basically now I'm managing it and I'm driving out at night to check on the lights to see if they're fixed. I, I check back with the residents. It just, it's just, it's just good service to, to do it. It's, I don't think any other towns are doing, most towns have someone else managing this stuff. But that's why that number's coming down is we're actually managing streetlights. Someone now calls it. I go out there, I send a picture. We have, we, we bid out the, now we have a local electrical contractor that does the work. We're saving money. I know it's a bigger budget, but that's all I have on that. If you, if you have questions.
So I just have one quick question. So just going back to that tree warden. So once you, you would mark the trees that need to be cut down or trimmed, what have you? And then do you send it out to bid then? Is that what the plan would be?
Well, right, right now, just so everyone knows, because Bill Jezerski, his son Mike is an actual officer in the police department. And, and so right now, I still haven't switched over because Jezerski's been doing this for years. I told him through the end of this fiscal year, we're going to still use him, but I'm putting it out to bid shortly. So yes, I'm going to put it out to bid. It's on an hourly rate. It's going to be the, the little contractor. And then based on if I have to have it fixed, if I have to have it addressed within two hours or whether I can schedule it, will be the different pricing. Because sometime in the middle of the storm, you just need a contractor right away.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, John?
I thought I heard you say that the dome is pretty much full.
Correct.
With salt?
Yes.
No. We had a mild winter. How much of that is unused compared to what it might have been if we had a bad winter? How much did we save?
What I'm trying to get. I'm trying to make sure I answer your question right.
What I'm trying to get, you projected on 440, a little less than before, $156,000?
Yep. And I, and I dropped that by 5,000.
Yeah, that number, depending on how much salt you didn't use this year, did you take into account that savings for that projected figure?
I, I hope I answered this correctly for you, John. The bet, the better way that I could answer for you is I'm probably going to be able to turn back about $90,000 out of my budget for what I didn't spend this year, even though I'm full. I, I'm full because I didn't use it this year, so I'm going to turn it back this year. But next year is based on a normal winter, we use about 2,000 tons, I think I have in the narrative. So the good thing about it is, even though our budget's like 3.7, and I've given these numbers to Anna and she's projecting them is based on, we had a lighter winter, so I have less overtime, less salt purchases. So I will be turning it over in this year's budget. So I, I still need the money for next year's budget, but I am saved, I did save money this year and I'll be turning it back to town.
One other question. I thought I heard you correctly. On the, the new item for traffic and calming measures, it's $20,000. Do you say that is five now?
I cut to five. It got, got cut by 15 and it's now five. It's a new, it's a new, it's a new thing. At least it's still on there, but we were trying to cut the budget. If you want to add it back, we can.
Okay, thanks. My only, my only thing was with this COVID issue, that I understand from different reports I see that traffic is less.
Well, that's now, we're talking about July 1st and that, I can't really, next, next, I mean, next fiscal year, which is what we're talking about, is people aren't slowing down. And when, second, people get to go ahead to go back out there, our roads are going to be jammed again. So I think that the fact that they're, they're less right now really doesn't impact next year.
I'm inside you right there now.
Uh, two.
Just do one by lowly B and where's the other one?
I don't know, because we move it around everywhere. I'd have to check my staff. I, we move it all around town and I don't want to do that. It's a pain, but I'm trying to spread the love out. Pine Grove likes it, um, uh, up in the, uh, Old Black Point likes it, uh, Roxbury, I mean, it, it, we trip, we move it all over the place.
John, it's on Scott Road right now.
Thank you.
Some of that 20, original 20,000, John, um, it was my, uh, request, um, to all, in coming from a, uh, a, a, a community task force, uh, to start looking at putting speed bumps in, um, in the beach communities. And while, uh, I'm glad Bill Shear is muted, uh, because he's screaming right now from his house and, and Joe is, is the gentleman and will bite his tongue. The public works does not want this. Uh, it will kill the plows. It, it, um, you know, people complain about them and all that, but I, I think we're at a place now and I've seen speed humps, uh, work in some communities, not in ours. Um, and, and I think we needed to go through that experiment of a, of a test. Uh, these things are expensive to put in. You don't just put some pavement over and rush. You actually dig down and, and, and destroy the pavement and then build it back up. It's $5,000 per speed hump. And I wanted to put two of those in as well. This isn't the year for it. We're trying to find nickels and dimes to cut back and we think we did that. Uh, I do think the town needs to explore speed humps and, and beach communities. Um, and, and, you know, where it's, it's normally 20 miles an hour anyway. There's a lot of kids walking on the streets in the summer, barefoot on the way to the beach and all that. It's just not going to be the year for it. Um, public works is going to have their, uh, work cut out for them anyway. And this is, this was an easy place to cut because this was a new initiative. And when I say that we don't have any new initiatives, this is one of those that we're cutting out.
Okay, thanks.
End of story.
And San Toro, did, did I see your hand up before? Do you have a question?
You know, I had questions related to the new initiative and, uh, they were just answered.
Okay.
Good for the moment.
Okay. Anybody else on the public works, uh, budget? Ju- just one, just one comment, Joe. I think when you had referred that your budget was actually reduced this year, you were considering the recommended reductions from the board of selectmen meeting in total, correct? So, so right, so right now the, what the adopted budget from the board of selectmen shows an increase of 1.45%. And you had indicated that your budget is actually coming in below that now. In the negative territory.
That's right.
That would be as a result of the proposed reductions from the board of selectmen for their adopted budget, correct?
And I, and I gave those budget, I gave those proposed reductions to the first one. So I, I, they didn't just cut my budget. I said, here, cut this.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand. I understand. I just want people to realize that.
No, I get what you're saying.
Okay, all right. Other than that, I, I have nothing further on your department. Anybody else? So I see the time is now 10:55 rather than delving into next department. Why don't we go ahead and take that 10 minute break? Let's, uh, try to get back by 11:05 and we will carry on. Sound like a plan?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the board of finances back. We are resuming the special meeting of Saturday, May 9th. The time is now 11:07. The next budget under discussion will be department 214 emergency management. I'm thinking Chief Inglestein will handle that presentation.
And, and the 214 budget is very bare bones. It's a minimal, uh, budget. There are not really increases that are inherent inside of that budget. What that does is it pays the stipend for, that I received for the, uh, EMD position. It has some of the staffing, um, stipends, the radiological officer, for example, that we have to have because we're an EPZ town from Millstone. That pays their stipend. Um, it also pays for the radio communications.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, chief, I'm, I'm going to interrupt you for just one moment. Um, for the board of finance members, if you're having trouble locating department 214, I believe it's under the tab, 224, public safety, emergency management. Everybody there? Okay. All right, great. All right, sorry for the interruption.
No, that, that's okay. Um, you'll see when you get down to services and contractual, the building maintenance is not actually building maintenance. What that is, is generator maintenance. The town has multiple tower sites spread throughout the town that in, that is part of the radio communications network. There are generators at each of those sites. Should there be a power failure so we can maintain communications? So that maintenance, even though it's titled building maintenance, um, is almost entirely for the maintenance that is required for those generators and generator services. The radio maintenance line, that is all encompassing for the town. The radio system, which the police, fire, EMS, public works, everybody you, the water utilizes is all, we have a maintenance contract with our provider. Um, and they come out and provide maintenance when needed for that system. Um, you'll see when you go through the telephone, that's the telephone systems through the dispatch center. Um, the training supplies are a minimal amount for emergency management trainings that we have to, uh, go to. Um, the AED fund, that is one. There's AEDs that are, uh, located throughout the town. Uh, several years ago, or I think two years ago, Chris Taylor had made the recommendation because there really was not a home to maintain those, uh, AEDs, especially for battery or powder placements. So that is what funds that and that's a very useful tool to have throughout the community. Transportation allowance, um, the administrative, um, the administrative assistant to emergency management, Julie Wilson, is often required to go to meetings. That provides for the reimbursement for her transportation mileage for those. Uh, and miscellaneous supplies, it's a very detailed list, which says really what we have to, uh, maintain for supplies to keep the EOC up and, and operating. So at that, in the, in the interest of time, I'll, uh, entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board of finance members on public safety, emergency management? Okay, seeing no questions, we will move on to public safety dispatch, department 215.
Okay, so inside of dispatch, um, you know, that is very heavily weighted towards personnel. If you recall, last year we did a shift in the, in the schedule of dispatchers. And just for the new members of the board, just to kind of really go through a very, um, Reader's Digest version of how it works. Dispatch center is staffed with two dispatchers, seven days a week from 7:00 AM until 11:00 PM. From 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, there's one dispatcher in place. Uh, we certainly have recognized over time that that is not the most ideal way to do it, but it is, uh, really what we have to get by with. Dispatching really requires in many times two dispatchers to handle the multitude of calls that can come in at the same time as well as, um, emergency medical dispatch. So EMD. If you call from your house and you're having a medical emergency, let's say it's a heart attack. One dispatcher stays on that phone and does the required emergency medical dispatch with that, uh, caller to walk them through helping that individual. While the other dispatcher is doing the dispatch radio communications to the, to the responders in the field. So there's a lot of work that is not really inherent or easily done by one dispatcher. So our staffing, which is very consistent with other communities, is having two dispatchers on staff most of the time. We have six full-time dispatchers currently that are union members. They work a rotating shift. Last, last year we, uh, worked well with the union to change their, their longstanding, um, schedule. It used to be they were all Monday through Friday, working the three shifts. Uh, we have worked with them to change their shift so they rotate days off and, and move around and get a little better, better coverage. Uh, we eliminated or reduced the number of part-time shifts from 10, which was inherent every week to five. The problem with part-time dispatch is you have some outstanding people doing the job. And unfortunately, the reliability, sometimes it, it ebbs and flows. We have a, a roller coaster really of availability because those individuals mostly have other full-time jobs and other commitments in their lives. So we cannot require them to work any certain number of hours. So we may have times that we have great part-time coverage for the shifts that are available. Other times where we have to rely on a full-timer on overtime because you have to have people in those chairs at all times doing the function. So whether it's because a dispatcher is sick, is at training, um, on vacation, we always have to have people in those chairs for replacement. Ideally, we try to do that with part-timers, but unfortunately, as experience shows in the vast majority of towns, part-time dispatch availability again, um, is not completely reliable. So you'll see a change in, in the budget and that's one of our, our biggest lines, uh, that changes is in overtime. Last year when we switched schedules, we did a, a drop in the overtime line because we had a feeling that dropping the shifts for part-timers from 10 to five a week, we would be able to experience a, a much better, uh, cohesiveness of, of that, that staffing. This year though, we were, we're kind of hit with two dispatchers being a long-term medical, uh, situations where we had month, a month at a time for two dispatchers where we had to fill on overtime, um, all of those shifts. So you'll see we're going to go up a little bit in overtime. I think at the last meeting, you had a request, um, to bridge us to the end of the year with, with some overtime funds. And unfortunately are unavoidable situations because again, have to have somebody there, have to have it with a full-timer on overtime. If I don't have a part-timer available, so that's really where we stand right now. Any, any questions on that portion of it? The only other change, if you notice in the budget, um, is the contractual raise that's given to dispatchers. Um, other than that, everything is remaining status quo in that, in that budget.
If no other board of finance members have a question, I'll, I'll ask my questions next. Anybody at all? Okay. Uh, chief, I, I see where we reallocated dollars to the overtime budget in this fiscal year. Um, I'm just looking at reports as that of the end of March because I don't have Aprils yet, but we're up here around, I believe, $60,000 this year in overtime. So we, we, we paid for that by taking funds from part-time dispatchers. So is that true? So $10,000 in one clip and then $20,000 in another clip. So a total of $30,000 came out of actually, I believe, the part-time dispatcher fund to cover the overtime this year. So are we gonna, one question is, will we run short then in the part-time dispatch line this year?
No, we, we shouldn't. And so understanding that you, you, it's also not an apples for apples. So what you're paying the time dispatcher is far less than the overtime rate for the full-time, um, dispatcher. So we're, we're hoping that we are, we are okay, understanding it's the five shifts a week for the most part that we're filling with, with that. Where we ran into the problem is in those five, if every week, let's say for a month, I have no part-timers available. Well, now that's 20, which would have been part-time shifts. Now I'm paying it an overtime rate to a full-timer. So that's really how that kind of situation arises. We should be okay for the rest of the year with a part-time line.
So if we're okay for the rest of the year, part-time dispatcher line, do we need to do a, um, you know, a, a flat, a flat budget this year? Or can we shave some dollars off of that 56,814?
Uh, well, I, again, it's a calculated risk because what's going to happen is understanding if a full-timer takes a shift off by their contract. Let's, I'll play this out. If you have a full-timer that calls in sick by their contract, that first has to be offered to the full-timers at an overtime rate. If there's no full-timers available, then it bounces to a part-timer. If it's one of the five part-time shifts a week, it goes to part-timers first if there's no part-timers available, full-timers. So what, what I guess the, the issue is if we go through a perfect year where there's no illnesses, no, nobody out extended periods of time. Um, yes, then we should have an access in either of those lines. The problem is, is it's really again, a calculated risk to figure out which line you're going to have least impact on. So the 56,000 is based on the five shifts per week. So calculating that out in a year, it should cover all five shifts per week with a little bit extra for part-timers to fill maybe some of the full-time shifts that we weren't able to fill with full, or full-timers weren't readily available to take. I should put it that way. Ultimately, end of the day, a full-timer get ordered into work if no part-timers are available, but we offer to them first for the full-time shifts. So, you know, the 56 is based on the five a week. Um, if we were to cut that, then we'd run short on that. The overtime is based on kind of experience of where we are, trying to bridge the gap, not go to what we've actually expended this year because you can't expect the anomalies medically we had this past year. Um, however, it's a round number to say we don't want to go back, um, and have to, you know, burden the contingency fund to take money out later.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the chief on 215 dispatch?
Um, Camille, if I might, um, to clarify, um, in this year's budget, um, in order to, so, so that we would not have to go to the boards early in the year, we were transferring from the part-time account into the overtime account. If you remember at the last, um, board of finance meeting, you approved, um, a transfer of $11,000 from the part-time account in the police department into the overtime account as well as, um, uh, a $10,000 transfer contingency to their overtime. And in addition, we had to transfer $8,500 into the part-time account because we had transferred so much from that to get us through, um, the rest of the year. So just to kind of put all of that in, into, um, perspective for you.
I do remember. Thank you. Okay, there's no further questions for dispatch. Let's move on to department 216, the police.
Now, I, I don't know if this is the appropriate place, but I would like to offer up, uh, two items from the SIP um, that we don't need to have funded this year.
Well, this is an excellent time.
Excellent time for excellent. That's, that's why I figured, um, you know, to start working, we're trying to work in emergency services closely to consolidate equipment that we have. Uh, we had originally put in for a gator replacement, the gator that we utilize downtown, uh, for the beaches, for the events, is running on 11 years old. We had a major upgrade had to happen last year. It's really close to end of life, so we were looking to replace that. I mean, in examining equipment that exists, the fire marshal has identified the Kubota that is, that is owned by the fire marshal's office, um, really isn't utilized, um, or, or needed, um, in his opinion, for the job that they're, they're, they're performing. So what we would, are going to do is take that on in the, in the police department and emergency management, keep that downtown for events and other, other functions, certainly available to the fire marshal anytime. But I think it bridges the gap a little bit where we, it gives, it buys us some years. While it's not brand new, it certainly is not as used and worn as the, as the gator is. So, um, that is 11,000 we can take off. The second amount is a 25,000 in there for the AFIS prisoner processing. I had put that in originally, um, in the building project for the new PD, not knowing the funding and what we were going to have. Um, but we're going to be putting that, that amount into the technology communications part of the new building project. Because what that is, is the fingerprinting system that's utilized or required to process prisons. So part of the networking and computer system and, and everything we need in the new building, we're going to identify that in, in those funds that were allocated for that. So I think it's appropriate to take it out of the SIP that was originally put there as a placeholder, not knowing where we would stand financially with that.
So just for clarification to make sure I understand, the $500,000 communication line item budget in the police department project will cover that 25,000 for that AFIS?
Yes, yeah.
So we can take, so we can easily
It was really being duplicated and it shouldn't, it didn't need to be.
Okay, I pre, I appreciate your pointing that out. I really do. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so how about the operational side of your budget?
The operational side, I don't know how, in the spirit of time, and I know, you know, you, you're, you're under a, a window at the end here. So I'd like, if, if possible, just to go over what increases are here. If there's any other questions, please let me know. Um, if you want me to do it differently, Camille, please let me know.
I have a question right off the bat that will help us keep things in perspective. Um, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get a handle on, on the current year head count. We added a full-time police officer in January of this year, 2020, right? So is it correct to say that currently on staff are yourself as the police chief, 25 full-time officers and one part-time?
It's, it's 24, including myself, for full-timers. So there's 20, I, I am the 24th, if you want to count it that way, full-timer, and then there's one part-time officer. And that just
All right, I'm looking, I'm looking at my notes for 2021. So 23 full-time officers, yourself, which makes 24, and then there's a, a part-time officer still?
Correct.
And so that 23 includes the new hire of January 2020. Your original, your original budget was requesting two additional police officers and the board of selectmen is making a recommendation to reduce that by one.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
So yeah, rather than the chief going through line by line, why don't we just begin with questions? If anybody has questions for Department 216?
I have a couple.
Okay, Anne.
Yeah, um, so, um, Chief, could you just run down, so now we're going from, let's say, two to one, a recommendation for an added officer. So, um, could you outline that need and, you know, if that officer has certain specific duties as compared to others? And, and what's your, um, you know, what's your detail is on that?
So, so the, the, the entire issue with staffing of a police agency is multifaceted, where you're looking at population data, calls for service, criminal investigations, demographics of your town, statistical analysis of what is the officers per thousand population, which is a very in-depth study that has been done for many years by Justice Department, but also looking at your neighboring communities to see, what do they staff? And ultimately, the end of all of those processes are to say, what type of policing do you want to provide to your community? What is your community asking you for? The, the two biggest complaints that we, we receive as a police agency are related to traffic as, has been addressed by the First Selectman and Board, uh, the Director of Public Works, narcotics, things that are out there in the community, things we need to be proactive and able to, to be able to combat. So let's talk about the staffing level. Right now, we're at 1.2 officers per thousand population. 2015 Justice Department study put it at 1.8 is what the average should be. We know that, that really financially, we're burdened with the inability really to get to that level. But we really do need to say, well, we are under policing or understaffing the police department to do what we're being asked to do. I think on a daily basis, we do an outstanding job of doing more with less, of being able to get out there in the community. But I also have a difficult time sometimes looking at, let's say, the evening shift in the summer. We have three people working in your town. You have a supervisor and two officers as your minimum patrol. On a Saturday evening in the summer, that gets very burdensome, burdensome, excuse me, because that is a busy shift. We have a lot of things going on. We try to accommodate having extra officers on, be it the walking patrol, the beach patrol, and those type of things. But those are special patrols. We're paying extra or some of those beach communities are, are paying. So we really need to look at what are our needs? And in my mind, asking for two officers was trying to beef up that evening shift while at the same time trying to focus specifically on traffic. One of the problems that happens is we are averaging, you know, about 17,000 calls for service per year. That's a lot of calls, investigations that have to happen. Your officers on patrol have very little time to sit and actually run radar, do traffic enforcement because they're writing reports, going from call to call, doing other, other tasks, while also actively patrolling. I think a good solution is to say, the new officer, because we've been reduced, you know, from two to one, would be focused on traffic as a traffic officer. Now, that traffic officer is multifaceted. What that officer's doing is, if we, if myself, Sergeant Mason, or anybody gets a complaint saying, on this street, we're having a problem at this time, I can put that person there, and that person's not being called away to calls for services, not writing criminal reports, not doing the other things that make it difficult for an officer to run radar and do that traffic enforcement. So it's really focusing policing, it's being proactive, and it's saying, where are our problems? Uh, Joe Brugault mentioned, and it was perfectly stated, those speed, uh, signs that are out there. I get that data so I can see trends, and on this road, we're having speed problems at X time. People call and say, we have problems at Y time. If I have an officer who's 40 hours a week dedicated to just doing traffic enforcement, I can allocate them to all of those areas and hit the spots that, that were needed. Last spring, we did an initiative where in May and June, I put an officer on overtime out there to do traffic enforcement only. We had a 35% increase in our, our traffic stops. So right there, we had a very proactive, a very visible presence, but also a presence that actually had a result. We were able to look and say, okay, we are getting people stopped, we're getting them educated on speed issues, we're getting the people that are in the community who have concerns about speed issues, also having their concerns acknowledged. So I think a traffic officer is multifaceted. It gives you a great deal of, of benefit. So to Anne's question, that's where I would focus that resource, being that it was reduced down to one.
Okay, thanks. And I just had another question about, um, it might have been just the narrative. Training looks to be the same at 52,000, and then K-9 maintenance. Um, and there's a reference to increases. So I think it just might be, uh, I think those things, those, those numbers are actually staying the same.
Yes. Which line, Anne, are we, I'm sorry, are we looking at training?
517, am I at 517? Let me, let me check that. I have it from my notes, and then I've got to go back here and.
The training was 517.
Yes. Okay, it is 517. And I think we stay, you stayed the same. Just want to make sure there wasn't something I'm missing that, you know, you wanted to increase and you didn't increase, or there was to be-
No, no. So, so what we're trying, I, I guess what we're trying to do is we're trying to creatively increase the training received, not necessarily the dollar amounts that are needed. Because, you know, this past year, we've sent multiple officers to traffic reconstruction, or accident reconstruction school. We're trying to get more specialized trainings for the officers. So not only do we have the everyday certification training, the firearms use of force, but also trying to locate and identify specific trainings that get a better workforce out there. So right now, we went from when I came in, we had one traffic, uh, accident reconstructionist, to now having four and being part of a regional team. So trying to really focus the specialty trainings that we put out there, um, and get officers that are better qualified, not better qualified, but uh, better able to address specific needs that happen in our communities.
Okay. That's it for now. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, John Birmingham. Yes, John.
Okay. Chief, I'm looking at two line items. Line item 313, uniforms.
Okay.
That, number 36,700, at the time, is that assuming you'd have two offices?
I think that's been-
Yes, and, and the Board of Selectmen reduced it by the one. So. Or recommended reducing it by, by fitting one officer.
Right. So that 36,700, is that including the one officer or?
That is, yes. Um, actually, I don't know, Anna, did, did that, did the recommended, recommended reductions to the Board of Selectmen reduce that?
So, um, the, the reductions that were made by the Board of Selectmen were, um, sent to the Board of Finance as recommendations. So the budget still sits at the 36,700 that was originally submitted.
So it would be one, it would be 1,200 less.
Right. Let me, let me just, let me just read off, uh, the recommended reductions from the Board of Selectmen. Eliminate one new police officer position, 66,123. Eliminate one uniform for that officer, $1,200. Facility rental, $15,000, which, um, we need to talk about.
No, 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 no. Those are the only two from police. Yeah, we put the-
You add the, you added the 15,000 back?
Yep. Yeah, on the latest, um, we put it back on there because of the timing.
Because of the timing of the availability of the buildout of the new P S B. Okay, so.
And we had to make a-
So everybody understands that $15,000 is for the rental facility for the lockup space that we're renting from the Waterford Police Department.
Right, we're, we rented on a yearly basis, and, and they needed, you know, they have a budget too that they needed to, uh, fill. So we, we, we committed to a whole year. Because it'll be a transition period of time.
So Mark, I think that, Mark Nicholson, I think that, that contract expired. Are we on, are we on a year-to-year basis now, month-to-month? How is that working? Year-to-year, a month, year-to-year? So we are contracted through now, June 30th, 2021? Waterford. Okay, thank you. Yes, John.
One more question. For the chief. On, uh, line item 320, miscellaneous supplies.
Okay.
What, it was almost a 10% increase, what specifically caused the increase?
Let's get to the, hold on a second, John. It was just, I think it was, it was more just a realization of the cost was, especially for the printing materials. So we're, that pays for ink cartridges that are being utilized. And while it says 10%, it's, you know, really, we go, or we go wherever we get those ink cartridges, we're burning through those like crazy. So that's taken up a huge piece of it, as well as the postage for a lot of the stuff that we have to send out. So those are two areas, I think, we indicated or noticed, we have a huge increase that has resulted. But that was based on need. It was based on what we're actually experiencing in our budget. So look at this current year right now, we are at, give me one second to find it. You know, we're at 77%. So we're right on track for where we should be for, for the year. So, um, I mean, maybe that is an area to cut a little bit, but we're trying to be careful with what we have to do for purchasing.
All right, thanks.
Yes, Peter DeRosa?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, line 513, foot, foot patrol. That's for some of the special events in town, given the, given the COVID virus situation. That's, that's a target, obviously. And there's a potential for savings if we don't have some of the major events coming up.
Is there- Actually, Peter, I think, you know, I, actually, did you have more? I don't want to interrupt you. I'm sorry about that. It's kind of-
My question is, is there a potential that it could be increased because of the situation that we're in?
I, I'm actually thinking that, that it is not a savings because unfortunately, when we're dealing with having to staff some of the downtown areas, beach, you know, parks and rec area, for example, you know, parks has a significant impact on their budget. However, we, we recognize that moving forward, we're going to have some issues down at the parks, beaches, et cetera, if these restrictions maintain, you know, in, in summer, so to speak, especially beyond. So that police presence will have to be there and will have to put through this line. So I definitely do not see a savings. I think the savings we were going to realize from World Day Pray, for example, is going to be eaten up by having officers at McCooks or downtown, um, you know, through those beach communities because-
That was my question is, yeah, it's, it's, it's a moving target. There's a lot of-
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Richard.
Yes, um, Steve, thank you very much for, for all the information. I was wondering about the line item for the, the K-9 maintenance. Right, we had two police dogs. And now we, that, I remember at a Board of Finance meeting, we gave the approval to get one police dog. So shouldn't the maintenance be half of that, 3,500?
Well, you know, and, and it could be. When we put, put the budget together, that was right at that cross of not, of deciding how we were going to do this. Right now, you, you did approve the funding for first K-9. Because of COVID, those trainings haven't happened. There's a lot of things put on hold. Officers aren't going to be out there training in this environment. We're not going to take somebody off the road for six-plus weeks either because of what's going on staffing-wise. So certainly, my only concern with that is we definitely have to identify, at the time we get back to two K-9s, we would have to increase that back to 3,000 because it, it's about $1,500 for the food, uh, and feeding of that animal, as well as the veterinary care per year. So temporarily, it certainly could be reduced to 15.
Okay, thank you. And do we currently have that one K-9 unit or?
No, we don't, because it was, it was approved, I believe it was approved December, January-ish, or I, time-wise. But because of COVID, there's trainings that are happening. So it's really put on hold from being able to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Anne.
So just, um, Chief, um, the part-time officer that you have, could you just explain what that person does?
Certainly. So, so basically, that's the one area where we're really able to do focused policing. Uh, that part timer by contract has a certain number of hours that we have to staff or provide that officer per week. Uh, Sergeant Mason and myself will, you know, really look at what's going on at the times this person's working to put them in the best deployable area, whether it's on radar in a certain area, whether it's a certain event that may be happening that we need to have extra coverage around. Um, so really, it's focused on situations, and, and many times, that simply may be on the evening shift, that Saturday type of thing I, I mentioned to you, having him as an extra car to go to, you know, go to calls and back officers up. Uh, we do not give that officer really any in-depth investigation simply because they're not working often enough to really cohesively do that. However, it is a extra person on there that can be traffic or, you know, backup related. So that's a great, great question. It is a valuable tool. Um, you know, however, you know, we, we, we try to be more creative with that position than just saying, hey, go get in a car and go drive. Because we want to make sure they're doing something beneficial to the town.
So if somebody's out sick, say, can that part-time officer fill in, or are they not qualified to do that?
No, contractually, that'd be a last-case scenario. So if we could not fill it with any other officer prior to going to what would be considered an order of another officer, we can offer it to that part timer to take the shift. Um, that's very seldom happens.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Yes, John.
And that brings up a, a question. As far as logging in and keeping track of the hours that the different offices work, who's responsible for checking on the actual hours worked? How does that work?
Well, the, so the officers respond, report to their shift, they go to roll call with a supervisor, and they are out there on the road till the end of their shift, where they come in and bring their car in, and then they do a written time card at the end of, of the week, indicating the hours worked. But there's a supervisor on every shift, and those, I, I, again, there's, I, I, hopefully I'm answering your question properly, but.
I mean, my question could apply to all departments, but since you were on your department.
Yeah.
When an officer, say, an officer comes back and signs out on his shift, it's a supervisor checking, double-checking his sign-out?
Well, the shift all works together. Nobody's working different hours on that shift. So at the end of the shift, the entire shift, once the new shift comes on, a roll call happens, the old shift is coming into the building. I mean, there's probably an observation that if somebody was not there, that they weren't there. But there is no sign-out procedure, but it hasn't really been something that's needed because that supervisor is responsible for the officers working their shift and their well-being. And certainly, if they didn't see them, there would be a question of, is there something wrong? Is there a problem? We have to go locate them.
So that applies to a full-time and part-time?
Correct, yes. And, and the one part-time officer, he works portions of shifts, so that's entirely upon that supervisor. So he may work a four-hour block inside of an evening shift. That supervisor is responsible for making sure that they're there, they're working, um, and they've completed the tasks that were assigned to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Richard.
Yes, um, you mentioned that there were 17,000 calls this last year. I'm wondering, how much of an increase was that over the, the previous year?
It's been, it, it's been fairly steady. Um, and the last three years, because the way stats were done prior to independent police department, I don't want to rely on those stats because I can't validate any of those. So really, we've been fairly consistent over the past three years that I've been here with the calls for service and types of things that we're going to. There are, of course, are rises and falls in certain areas of that. But they've been pretty consistent. So I wouldn't say we have a marked or dramatic increase.
And beyond the, the number of calls in terms of serious crimes, have we seen any kind of increase in, in that?
Yeah, let me just, um, I just have that in front of me. Trying to spread out here. I apologize. One second. That's a good question. Because from 2018 to 19, uh, we had a 9% increase in crimes against persons, property crime dropped 32%. Uh, but then this past year, crimes against persons went up 38%. Um, and property crime went down, that, uh, conversed 32%, and the crimes against society went up 13%. So, um, you know, crimes against persons continue to be the crimes that go up. Property crimes, I think we're doing a much better job of proactively being out there to dissuade a lot of those crimes, and those would be criminal mischiefs, larcenies, burglaries, those type of things. And society crimes are ones that may be drug-related, for example. Those are definitely increasing this past year. So again, I'm not sure if that fully answers your question, but, uh, you know, one of those things, especially in crimes against persons, when you talk about the hours of those officers, or you talk about the workload, that drastically increases that officer's responsibility for investigation reports, follow-up. So I want you to kind of put that in context of, if an officer is investigating the assault of somebody, that happens. Well, that takes many hours to do, and that takes them away from some of their- Well, that takes many hours to do, and that takes them away from some of their patrol abilities and some of the abilities to do traffic enforcement. So, you know, fuels even more the idea of wanting to have somebody who's specifically related just to traffic because then those officers can better focus on the investigations they're conducting.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, that brings up another question for me. At 38% in crimes against persons, domestic violence, that sort of thing, I think is what you're referring to?
Well, it could be. It could be other related assaults, but anybody where a person's a victim. So mostly, that's going to be domestic violence type stuff.
So it's my understanding that on your force, there is one female officer on the entire force, correct?
Yeah, we have five.
You have five? Okay. Is one dedicated to this sort of thing though?
Well, we have one detective and her sole focus as a detective, or I shouldn't say sole. The majority of her focus is crimes against persons. So that would be crimes of sexual assault, following up with domestic violence. She's a liaison to Safe Futures, which is an organization in southeastern Connecticut, which I know you're familiar with, working with Lindsay Michaels, who is their liaison to law enforcement on every case that we have that comes through. So patrol makes some arrests on the evening shift. Detective Kavanaugh is getting that information and working with Lindsay Michaels at Safe Futures to really make sure her services are being provided. But she also is focusing very heavily on any type of sexual assault cases that happen. Some of the more in-depth type domestic violence situations that may be occurring or custody or, you know, really family kind of matters. She may not always be the primary officer because of times they occur, but certainly is involved in that follow-up, so.
Thank you. And Chakel, did you have a question?
I do. So, Chief, I think, Christine, is there any way, I know we're looking to hire full-time. If you had a part-time, if you got another part-time police officer, would that be sufficient to cover like the traffic issues that you seem to say are the big complaints?
Well, I think, first of all, trying to find part-time officers who can maintain certification and are sufficiently versed in law enforcement is very difficult. That's why the vast majority of departments or almost all departments don't have part-time officers. Because the training requirements for a part-time officer are the exact same as a full-timer. So if you think in context of saying, you're a certified police officer, you have to have the same qualifications, but we're not going to give you benefits and only have part-time hours, you're not finding people to fill those roles. So difficulty. We have one part-timer that has just been maintained for a long, long time. And that's just simply because he's been for so long and it works for him. However, that's the rarity. So I think it's a viable solution, and I think full-time officers are definitely the better alternative simply because we can dedicate a person full-time to that task.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any else? Okay, just one item for clarification. If I heard you correctly, Chief, when the question was asked about the Foot Patrol and Parade duty, just so I understand, even though a number of our events are canceled, may be canceled, if our beaches actually do end up having to be closed this year, are you saying that we cannot have savings in that area because you would be required to enforce social distancing?
Well, I think.
In our public recreation areas?
Well, it's a concern, and it's a concern downtown too. So part of that, you think that the events that we're talking about are Memorial Day Parade, which generally I think is about $3,000 for us. It's not a large cost item that we're saving. It's Celebrate East Line, which Parks and Rec actually pays us $5,000 as reimbursement for. So that's not really a recognized savings for those two events. But we're still going to have to have those officers out there on that footpath, on those boardwalk beach patrols. So I don't foresee a large driver of economic savings, simply because look at this past weekend. We had two officers that had to be out there full-time. Parks and Rec was in partnership with us. But, you know, I don't know, and that's going to be a bigger town discussion of generally, they would pay us or pay for an officer to work the Parks and Rec facilities, but they're not getting the revenue they were getting. So as another town agency, you know, if you could find savings inside of that line for us, great. I just am concerned that we're not going to be able to identify that because, again, the events that are canceled, Memorial Day Parade and Celebrate East Line, the Celebrate East Line is paid for or reimbursed by Parks and Rec.
So if that gets canceled, we look to Parks and Rec for the $5,000 savings that they wouldn't have to pay you.
Out of there.
I'm sorry, Mark Nickerson, can you repeat?
They charge fees for patrons for the booths for Celebrate East Line. That's where that money comes from to pay for the police. Parks and Rec won't save $5,000. They won't be getting the income. They won't be getting the revenue of Celebrate East Line to pay for the police. But just to jump on what Chief was saying, don't forget, Rocky Neck is expected to be at 50% capacity. They're going to limit capacity there. So all these people are still going to come down to the shoreline searching for a beach. We're going to be limiting our capacity. We won't be closing our beaches either or our boardwalk. But we're going to have reduced revenue and increased expenses during this summer. No question about it. We're going to need police presence, just the traffic, people searching in our town and parking illegally. During normal times, people park on front lawns and driveways of private homes just to go search out a beach. So we expect to fully implement the police this summer. And Mike and I and Dave Putnam will be working together on trying to make sure during these tough times where people's nerve endings are a little frayed, that we make sure we keep everybody safe. Everybody, whether it's our residents or people visiting our town.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, reduced revenues, increased expenses directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic and our having to manage that in our little town here. Are any of those excess funds or reduced revenues part of the whole package that you're applying for, for Hartford funds as reimbursement for having to deal with this?
So this past weekend, for example, the two officers working for Parks and Rec, that'll be captured as a COVID-related expense. The problem is, is we also can't supplant, if you look for, if you look past years, we did have normal beach Main Street patrols. So we have to be very cautious with that because they have to be in excess of what we normally would have done. We're still going to have to maintain the normal patrols we always had in the summer downtown at the beaches, which at sometimes was two and three officers working at a time. There's just extra expenses that I'm worried about that we may have to have, i.e. go back to this last weekend. That wasn't a normal time. We would have people working Parks and Rec, but because of COVID, because of what was going on, we had people out there. So yes, those would be captured expenses, one of that reimbursement requests. But it won't be 100% of downtown patrols because we can't supplant what we've done in the past.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay. Any other questions on the Public Safety Police Department budget? Okay, I don't see any. So if everybody's ready, we'll move on to.
Sorry, before you do that, I don't want to interrupt. As far as on the SIP, I know we have a large item for the computer aided dispatch. Was there any questions on that? I just want to make sure before you get to deliberations that there's a full understanding of what the need is for that or because that is, you know, an essential item.
Direct us to that in the budget?
It's in the SIP, so under the computer-aided dispatch and records management system.
What page do you remember?
Under Police Department?
Yep. Yeah, under Department 216.
Page two, and it's the first line item under the Police Department 216.
$180,000.
Correct. So I just want to make sure everyone has a full understanding of really what that item is and the intricacies and important, and the importance of that. That's basically the operating system of your emergency services. It's not just police. It's not just dispatch. It's fire department, fire marshal. It also factors into public works, water, everybody in town. It is the lifeline of your dispatch center. So that is a computer system or a computer software program that when you call the fire, or you call 911, or you call dispatch and they enter that information in, it decides what happens. It decides where it goes. Aside from that, it also does the reporting system. So for the police department, it does all of our written reports that we have to submit. The fire department is how they do their written reports. The fire marshal is how he does his reports. So it's multifaceted. It reports to the state for the fire marshal. It reports to the state for us. It reports to the court system. It is the integral piece of equipment that is required of every community to have. Right now, we are working on the IMC system. IMC was a great system when it was put in about 2006. It has served its purpose. It is multifaceted. However, it is end of life. It is beyond end of life. As we all know, the software business is certainly, you know, I think a lot of people say they wish they were in the software business because that's where a lot of it's at. They have moved on to many, many new versions. IMC was originally a standalone company. It was purchased by Tri-Tec and then Central Square. And it is now a platform they do not any longer support. We've had meetings with the representative. It is basically a situation where they don't want to support that program. We have a problem then because we have something we need to replace it. You know, again, 2006 to now, a lot of changes have taken place. So we've gone out, we've had discussions with one vendor. We're trying to have conversations with Central Square for several months. COVID's put it behind to get a quote, but the quote we have for one system, which is being utilized, majority of southeastern Connecticut towns, is that 180. I also want to caution, I can't give you any information or promises. But in the past, when it was purchased, the East Line Ambulance Association was a partner in that purchasing. They've been a partner in the discussions. So certainly the town moving forward, if we identify a platform to go to, they would be a partner moving forward to see what type of funding they may be able to contribute to that. But again, I can't speak for them, just to know that in the past, when it was purchased, it was a partnership with that organization because it certainly benefits them on their side of things. So, you know, this is an expense that unfortunately is absolutely an essential need, not a lot because we don't have that system, all of these functions, you know, conversely kind of fail. Just want to make sure we, this could be asked now of that. And?
Yeah, so just a quick question. I'm just, I guess, a little confused. Is this going to the public service, Public Safety Building, or is this for, where would this go?
Well, it's everywhere. So basically, the server is housed in the Public Safety Building. But it networks out and this kind of factors into that 109 budget because that networking is crucial to operating. So it's like right now, the server for IMC sits at 171 Boston Post Road where Dispatch Center is. However, that then branches out to the Police Department for our records and our information, each fire department, those facilities. It would be housed in the new Public Safety Building. Once that building exists, it still venture out networking through the, to the different fire departments and fire marshals.
And so one more question. When would you plan to implement this? I know you said because of COVID, it's, you know, like is this as soon as possible you're trying to get this in place?
Once we got into the new fiscal year, as soon as we could meet the purchasing requirements and get, you know, a second or possibly third quote from a vendor who has a different type of product, then we would sit down as a committee. We have a committee put together, Police Department, the Fire Department, Ambulance Association, to look at different products that were out there to kind of determine, narrow down what's going to serve our purposes best in the town of Eastline. So if we get the funny place, then we start to move forward with continuing with those meetings, getting quotes to meet the purchasing process and really kind of come back and say, this is the product that is going to serve us best.
Okay, great.
At the size of that cost, we would have to go back to finance and say, this is the product that we're going to get.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I don't see anybody else with questions, so we will move on to Department 217, Niantic Fire Department.
I thought, are we going to do Animal Patrol first and then?
Oh, yes. Yeah, sorry. If you jump down on the agenda, Animal Control is Department 226, right?
Because then you don't have to, again, after that.
We don't have to go in order. Well, if everybody's in agreement, we'll move to 26 up on the agenda. Everybody good with that? Okay.
And Animal Control is, again, a very nominal. The only increase that's indicated is for the contractual salaries. Animal Control is a multi-town with the town of Waterford. We have a full-time ACO and we have a part-time Animal Control Officer that also works set hours. Inside of that budget, really, the only increases we went up were the contractual increases as well as a training expense. A part-time ACO has to be fully certified and trained. We have one year base of prior, or excuse me, when she's hired to do that, we are looking to do that in this next fiscal year to get her fully certified and trained. So that's a $400 increase in training to make sure that that happens. And other than that, again, it's a very bare bones budget. We are reimbursed for parts of it by Town of Waterford. So again, not really much to this.
Any questions for the Chief on Animal Control? I did have one question, Mike. The Waterford payments that we receive, can you point me, or maybe this is a question for Anna Johnson, can you point me to where those revenues are recorded? Is that an off-book revenue item, a special account, or is that in our?
No, it isn't. It's.
In our revenue sheet?
Yes, it's an 08 account.
An eight account.
It's 0108-800-832.
Boyness Dog Revenue.
So, Chief, in this year's budget, we have projected $55,000.
Right. And we're projecting?
Actually, I, when I, yeah, so we would, after our last payroll in June, so every quarter, Sergeant Dzerzky sends me a list of all the overtime and it's allocated out like Eastline only, Waterford only, Waterford and Eastline together. So for example, when the, if the full-time ACO has to go out on a weekend to clean the kennels and feed the dogs, that's typically overtime and that's a shared expense between the two towns. So I get that allocation and then at the end of the year, I bill Waterford for half the salary, their actual share of the overtime and like all of the other payroll-related items.
Okay. I have no further questions. Does anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Now, we can move on to Department 217, Niantic Fire Department.
Chief, thank, good job. Thank you for sticking in, sticking with us and being so thorough in your budgets. Good job. And Mike Mason, go enjoy the rest of your weekend. The two chiefs, for the new people on the Board of Finance, Camille, it might be wise to point out that these are two volunteer chiefs. They are not paid by the town. They are elected by the volunteers of their, of each fire department. We have Niantic Fire Department. We have Flanders Fire Department. You're all aware of that. Niantic, you'll see numbers are different than Flanders because they have two different buildings and different machinery. So, and you'll see that as well as you go through their budgets. But Chief Dwyer and Chief Ricks are career firefighters, and then they volunteer in our department. And we appreciate all the service that they do. And they work quite a bit with the paperwork and they're responsible for everything. So we very much appreciate them being here, sticking around, and they're available for questions and answers.
Thank you. I guess we'll start off with my capital budget. Does anybody have any questions directly in regard to any capital expenditures that I have before I move on to my operating budget?
I'm sorry, I can't see who's speaking. Is it Chief Rex or Chief Dwyer? Oh, okay, there you are.
Niantic is up first, so we're going with 217. So Dwyer, John Dwyer. And his capital is, we have the $11,000 there for the thermal imaging camera and then $12,800 for the turnout gear. Oh, no, that's been reduced, right?
That was your proposal for the turnout gear from four sets to two sets. We, that was your proposal for the turnout gear from four sets to two sets. Was was there. So it would be about $7,400 would be that, with that, but that budget line. There is a, um, an upgrade to our radios, our mobiles, portable radios for multi-band radio use. And that is just so that we can, um, we can talk with our neighbors, Waterford, Montville, New London, people that we rely on, Old Saybrook, Old Lime, departments we rely on when we need help. We call in, uh, extra help for for structural fires or vehicle accidents on the highway. Um, and that's just for interoperability, communication and safety. As an incident commander, if I'm running a scene, I want to be able to talk to the direct unit that I'm, uh, I've requested or is on my way so that I could disseminate the information and the instructions that I need them to do directly. Right now, it's 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 hard to do that with our current radio system and our current radios because I have to either make a phone call or our dispatch center has to make a phone call to another dispatch center to relay information to somebody on another radio frequency. Whereas these new radios that we're requesting gives us the ability to directly talk to that, to that fire department, that fire company, that piece of apparatus and equipment coming onto or into the scene to help mitigate the incident. So that's, and that's, that's what I got, the thermal imaging camera. I, we have not asked for a thermal imaging camera with the town or really anything insignificant from the CIP in in more than five years. So this is our our first opportunity. And the 20-year-old thermal imaging cameras I have, some of them that they don't even make batteries for anymore. Other ones, it's difficult for me to get batteries for and it's just old technology. You know, it's like an iPhone 4 compared to an iPhone 10. That, you know, everything is better, it's up to date, it's faster, it's stronger, it's more detailed. It helps me do, or helps us do our job better and safer and faster and is more reliable than the older technology. The older technology, when it first came out, was great. But 20 years later, um, you know, it'd be like having a 20-year-old cellphone. It it it'll make a phone call, but that's probably about all it's going to do. So just kind of put that into a perspective. We need, we need better, faster, stronger, safer, more reliable equipment and and that's why the request is there.
Okay, any questions on the capital portion of the Niantic Fire Department?
Yes, I I do have, just at the beginning of your, your speaking, Chief Dwyer, I didn't hear, are you reducing the turnout gear request or?
Yes, we, we're working with the Board of Selectmen on their recommendation. They've recommended, uh, and we've agreed to go from four sets of gear down to two sets of gear. And that's there for several reasons. One, if somebody rips or breaks or end of life, 10-year lifespan with fire equipment per OSHA and per NFPA. And so, and also if we hire new employees, that's there as well. Somebody gets contaminated, uh, you know, at a fire, a fire scene and I need a new boot or new gloves, that money is there for 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 gear and is able to, like, able to to buy the gear and have that available. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to use it, but it's there in case I need it. And and I I need it because, uh, you know, the 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 job that we do. I can't tell you if we're going to ruin a set of gear tomorrow or not, but if I do, I have money there to replace it.
But you, but you do feel that you could manage with two sets rather than four of these substitute sets?
Because of the budget atmosphere that we're in, I am, I am fairly confident that we can get away with two sets rather than four. I, and yeah, that's, that was a, that was a, that was something that we were able to, I think we were able to give up on on our end to kind of help help out this year.
Well, thank you. Thanks.
Good question, but keep in mind, this is a deferral. Next year, they'll be asking for six to make up the difference. This isn't like savings because of, and I made a deal with the chief that this is a particularly hard year for a lot of families, so let's bring it down to lowest as possible. We have to make up that difference next year. We have to make sure our people are safe.
Understood. I think, you know, for the time being, it's an acceptable supply. And it may, it may change too, but at least we can manage for the next months ahead, we think. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, John?
I don't know if this has an effect on your part-time firefighters, because I see that went up quite a bit. Have you had any success in getting volunteers? I know it's a problem all over the country, but how have you fared getting, as far as getting volunteers?
I, I can, I can go into that as long as every, is everybody done with with my capital portion of it? Is there any more questions on my capital before I move on to that?
Actually, I do have a question on the capital, so let's, let's address that before we move on to John's question. So the radio upgrade that you're referring to for $103,000, that is for the actual equipment, is it for a maintenance contract? What what's involved with the 103,000? And you might have said it already, I've just, and I didn't catch it.
So when you and I met Camille a couple of months ago, I had addressed this with you face to face and that, just so everybody knows. So that's a complete accomplishment. That's programming, installation, radio maintenance for up to two years. And and that's uninstall of the old stuff and installation of the newer stuff, programming, et cetera. So even it goes down to the the radio holders, so personnel can hold them on their person safely. And they're not dangling in the way, hitting patients in the head if they're standing over them, that sort of thing. So all of that encompasses, that that number encompasses all of that.
I do remember our conversation well. Thank you for that time. But I did want to ask that question so it goes on the record. So the attendees watching understand a little bit more about what that's about.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to my operating budget. The town, contractually, with a full-time staff, agreed to a two and a half percent increase this year coming up. So I had to work that number into my budget as far as full-time staff, increase in overtime numbers. So that that number increases as well. The town also agreed contractually to a uniform up, uh, increase as well from $750 up to $900 per full-timer, uh, 950, uh, per full-timer, which did not leave my current budget number from last year in a good, good spot. I had no money for my part-time staff. If somebody ripped a pair of pants or needed a T-shirt or a sweatshirt, all those things, I really drain that account. So my increase there is because I do have, collectively between Chief Ricks and myself, we have nine full-time staff that we need to budget for. But I need to, I have nine part-timers that I need to also make sure that they have the safety shoes or the safety, you know, pants and the T-shirts and the uniforms that they need to to do their job and and make sure that that that's there just as much as the full-time staff. Um, so you'll see that increase. The increase in the part-time budget, to go to Mr. Birmingham, the increase in that is because we certainly currently don't have 24/7/365 coverage. When there was 18 hours a week, which was early Friday night or Saturday morning from 12:00 AM to 8:00 AM, there was, there was nobody at 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 the firehouse in Niantic. And because of those two days, Friday night, Saturday night, or if you, if you will, Sun, Saturday morning and Sunday morning, we were relying solely on the volunteers. And although our numbers are diminishing as they, as 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 stated earlier, we, I feel that it is time that we start staffing the firehouse around the clock. And that is just to make sure, A, the truck is getting out or the ambulance is getting out. We're providing the services to the town and the community and the guests. And it's our responsibility and it's my responsibility to make sure that that is happening no matter what time it is, whether it's during the day or at night. And I think to have 24/7, true 24/7/365 coverage is is well past due. This is a conversation probably should have had with with the board probably five or 10 years ago. But I'm just bringing it to you now because of the identification of the of the failing volunteer service. And I don't mean failing as in not doing it, I just mean failing as in the numbers. The number of volunteers that are obviously coming in the door, especially right now in the last three months, I've had nobody. We're not having anybody, uh, you know, we're keeping a tight ship here to make sure that we're all clean and we're all healthy and we're doing what we're supposed to do through CDC and LDH guidelines. But we're relying heavily on on paid staff to make sure that the apparatus, the equipment, the the calls are getting mitigated and we're providing the service to the community and the guests as as we should be and it's a responsibility to do so. So that's why you'll see that increase in the part-time staff there, uh, numbers because of that, because of those 18 hours, 18 hours a week increase. So just to clarify that. Other than that, other, any increases, I did have a proposal for building maintenance from 6,000 to 8,000. I actually run out of three buildings, not two. The original firehouse is the, what we we call the Morris Building. And that's number six Grand Street. It's right next to our firehouse on Eight Grand Street, the fire department right behind Bank of America. And that was built in the 1920s and we still utilize the building. We still have things called plam event systems that that get the exhaust from the trucks when we start them up outside of the firehouse. So they're not polluting the air within the firehouse. And those maintenance costs have risen. And as well as the station, at Station 227 West Main Street, all those, all those facilities have those health, health reducing equipment there, our safety equipment there to to help our firefighters stay healthy. And and, you know, just the building maintenance costs have gone up. I've put door locks on the doors to make sure that I keep people that are just wandering in and out, out, because we did have that problem. So, uh, you know, we're, we're, we've taken steps to secure our fire stations, secure firefighters and EMTs and our equipment. And, uh, you know, the maintenance costs and the cost to maintain those, not two buildings, three buildings actually, 1920s, 1950s and a 1970s building I'm operating out of. And that's the increase in my building maintenance costs from 6,000 to 8,000 is because of that. So, um, that's, um, that was the reason for the increase. Other than that, the longevity pay stayed the same. And like I said, the only other increase there, I did, we did add the fuels there, but Eastline Ambulance, um, has agreed to pay for the fuels again this year for the fire department. So that was taken out of there. And 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 everything else has stayed the same. So my, so really just the contractual obligations increases and that those two eight-hour shifts, uh, Friday night, Saturday night are my increases. And with that, I'll take any questions. That's it.
Any questions for Chief Dwyer? I just have a quick question for you, Chief. Looking at the budget detail, uh, could you, it says that the overtime accounts covers for special town and non-town events. Can you just give me a couple of examples of what non-town events are?
Non-town events would be like the Hartford Marathon group coming in and doing their things, the jet ski races out on, uh, off Niantic Beach. Those would be special events. The Rocky Neck State Park coverages and and overages. Because typically, um, we have a small city out there every summer and there's literally one guy sitting in that firehouse that's half a mile down the road. So he has a ginormous responsibility and even if that number is cut in half, like like has been proposed and suggested to do so this summer to keep us all Covid safe, you're still talking several thousand people in that area. So the number of, for overtime, for non-events, that would be to cover the overages for shifts or if there's a, in a event in the area or in town, that would suggest that I, that I feel I need to put more people on, that's why that number's there. Also, I want to remind everybody that the Niantic River Bridge Project is coming. And I've been through several meetings, they're requesting an actual presence there by the fire department staff to maintain, so they can do what they're doing when it comes to confined spaces. Uh, and we need to have a group of firefighter EMTs, confined space technicians there to rescue these people in case something happens with them. So, and that is something I believe we're getting reimbursed with by the state. I think Mark can speak on that a little bit if you have to. But, uh, so, you know, that, that's, you know, that's going to be an overtime cost increase to that as well.
So, so Mark Nickerson, if you could speak to that? I mean, I know that we get reimbursed from the state when we have police coverage on the state roads, correct? That goes into a special, a special revenue account for the police or? And so would this, would this reimbursement from Hartford go into a special revenue account? Or would we see it in our town revenue?
I defer to Anna about how she's going to, um, balance this out, but yes, it would be reimbursable as it is a specific request for the fire department to have certain technicians with certain certifications available and e- either onsite or available offsite to, for these rescues. Yes, at the end of the project, we would be reimbursed for those expenses. And what what Anna does with that, I think it goes into the general fund, doesn't it? You're unmuted.
With regards to the, any, anything that we do for outside-town agencies, we, we do bill them for those jobs. For the police, because police, it's a constant ongoing thing. We actually have a special account that zeros out when we reimburse them. We, we don't do it that way for the fire departments because there are not as, it's not like as as constant for the police. So typically, I would reimburse the payroll account when we get a, when we get a reimbursement from the outside agency.
So we wouldn't see that in a revenue line item? We would see that as a reduction in a current expense? Are you saying that you netted against a current expense?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so did your budget, do these budgets account for that at all? That that anticipated reimbursement or no? What what I'm trying to understand is so, in in the 2021 fiscal year, what we're doing is accounting for a projected increase in expenses, but not a corresponding offset from reimbursements?
You know what, Camille, why don't I, uh, work on this Monday with the Chiefs?
Okay.
Because I see where you're going with this, so rather than, um, you know, debate it today, I'll, I'll work offline with them on Monday.
Not debating, just trying to understand.
I, I, yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's a good plan. Okay, yes, Anne Chakow?
So it's my understanding, you were saying that you have three buildings, six Grand Street, eight Grand Street and 227 West Main Street?
Correct.
My question is, do you plan to, like, keep maintaining three buildings? I mean, do you need the three buildings? Or is it something where you can consolidate into, say, like, two buildings?
So, uh, the Niantic Fire Department Headquarters Building, uh, original building, we outgrew rather quickly and then we moved into Eight Grand Street back in the 1950s. And since that design, uh, our, our needs for space, our apparatus size, our, our certain requirements for cleanliness and clean rooms and disinfecting areas, all those things have increased. So we've had to get creative with the space that we had. And we found that space in that old Morris Building once it wasn't being utilized. And so, um, and back in the day, it was used by the Visiting Nurses Association. I know there was a couple of other town-related entities that were in and out of that building for quite some time. And, um, and so there was, the building kept getting repurposed and repurposed and we finally took it back over. So for the bit, so a majority of it is for storage, meaning like our, our AT with our gate unit, our trailer, our boat, our pickup truck, those are all things that are stored within that. Those are all things that are stored within that in that facility, uh, as well as overspun. As if there's a need for um, this bad storm and I have a big, big pumps that you can pump out your basement. For business, uh, or keep a rope open, uh, I can drop those, I have those pumps available, they're ready, they're maintained. They're easily accessible, you can get loaded and make it go, and that is the purpose of having those three buildings. Um, our Station Two building, just for you to give you an example, um, we run our primary uh an engine out of there with a backup ambulance normally. And uh, and our brush, um, our brush, brush fires have gone down, which I'm sure Mr. Wake and. For eventually, um, but um, we still need that piece of apparatus to respond, it is uh four. Uh, brush fires, it's built to go in the woods, um, it, it's uh nineteen, it's a nineteen fifty, no nineteen sixty-one Dodge Power Wagon. Today, um, so we still rely on that very well, um, we're doing, I I'm doing the best I can with what's given to me. Buildings, it would be fantastic, um, but I I need the room. Um, just like anybody else with the Public Works or or Chief Rex of the Flanders Firehouse here. Um, we've all uh need to expand and grow as our services and our need and uh our demand grows, so does our, so does our.
Okay, thank you, I'm just really trying to understand it, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Chief Dwyer? We're all set? Okay, then we can move on to the Flanders Fire Department, Department Number Two Eighteen. And um. We'll just stick with the format, we'll start with the uh CIP report. So. Chief Rex is the Fire Chief of the Flanders, I mean, the Niantic Fire Department, I imagine. We'll take the floor, chief.
Yep, all right, so I'll start off with the CIP for the Flanders Fire Department. Um, you'll notice our big ticket item right off the top is eight hundred thousand dollars to replace a twenty-six-year-old fire engine. Um, as most of you know, uh, you've come to the firehouse taking a tour, I've shown you the apparatus, specifically this one. Um, it's out of service right now, it's, I said, it's twenty-six years old and it's around. Twenty-six thousand dollars of repairs to get it back in service, um, I have a. Line item of eight hundred thousand, actually, we can reduce that to seven hundred thousand. Um, and I believe I could still possibly come under that, I'm waiting for the final specs to come back, um, so you can definitely reduce that to at least seven. Um, when referring to the fire engine, uh, that one specifically, um, we used it at the guy's oil fire. And it pumped for about four to five hours straight. And by the end of the fire, once everything was done and and knocked down, it died. And it was very embarrassing to have to ask the owner that just lost half of his business to help get our fire engine running to get it back. So it's, it's well beyond its uh, its use at this point and it's, the cost repair outweighs its value. Uh, the last value, I think we got was like eight or nine thousand dollars um to sell it or trade in. Um, so, like I said, that one, we reduced from eight hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand. Um, going down the five SCBA cylinders. Um, basically, the last time we bought SCBAs, we bought everything all at once through a grant that we had gotten, I believe it was two, three years ago, I wrote it. Uh, it was two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars through FEMA and the town's responsibility was only nine thousand dollars of that. The problem with purchasing everything at once, everything expires at the same time, so not guaranteeing that we're gonna ever see a grant again. I'm trying to spread it out where we buy five cylinders a year and uh you'll see the next item is two packs a year. So every, every couple of years, we're just gonna replace a couple of thousand dollars as opposed to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, unfortunately, the bottles and the packs themselves have different expiration dates. Uh, they're not exactly the same, so just trying to spread that out, um, the packs actually don't come into until twenty-four, twenty-five. But we need to start replacing the bottles now. Uh, the four sets of turnout gear, uh, like Chief Dwyer mentioned before with Mr. Nickerson, we've reduced from four to two. But expect uh staff for the additional two next year for whatever equipment becomes expired as. NFPA states that uh PPE has a ten-year life expectancy. After that, uh, our battery, we don't have the battery replacement anymore, uh, and six thousand dollars for hose replacement. That could be anywhere from inch and three-quarter, two and a half hose or five-inch hose every year. Annually, we have to test our hose, uh, we have a uh contract with. JLN that does our testing for that, and there's always, if it's out of date, it's gotta be replaced, and if it fails, it's gotta be replaced, so. That's been a constant uh capital purchase for us for years now. Other than that, I'll take any questions on the capital.
Any questions for Chief Rex on the capital? I just have one question for you, chief, um, so Flanders Fire Department is slightly less staffed than Niantic Fire Department, correct?
Uh, we have one less full-timer.
Full-timer. Okay. But the radio upgrade to all the existing mobile and portable to multiband figure that you have is higher than Niantic. By five thousand dollars, trying to understand why that number would be different.
So, uh, Chief Dwyer and uh myself went out and got bids from radio companies. And it's not gonna upgrade all of our radios, this is a minor fix, that's gonna get us the minimum that we need to be able to talk. This isn't gonna replace everything we have, if we replace everything we had, then it would be a lot higher. And we've actually cut this back from what we originally proposed uh to the first, the board of selectmen, um, and it's one of those. We picked how many mobiles, how many portables, and it's, it's an equipment operational standpoint, it's nothing, nothing other than that of. What we feel in each department, we need per fire engine or truck or personnel.
So right now, you're saying your need is greater than the uh Niantic Fire Department in terms of this area, what needs to be replaced and upgraded?
Need one additional, it probably works out to be one additional radio than what he's asking for.
So, okay, and you're saying that this is a partial solution?
This is, this is gonna fix the fire, either fire department all around, this, this is gonna get what we need to get now. Like I said, if we were to do.
So what percentage does this represent of the total project if we were to fund the total project upfront?
Three hundred some, yeah, it it'd be over three hundred thousand if we did every, if we replaced every mobile and portable radio that each fire department has. You're easily over three hundred thousand dollars.
For, for all the ones that we have in inventory, oh, I think, yeah, I think Chief Dwyer mentioned that amount, I didn't jot it down. So, there's nothing on the capital plan in the future for those dollars? How, how long will this? This gets approved and you get to do all this upgrade, how, how much time will that buy you?
Uh, the, the time, uh, that it's, it, these radios, the, the upgrade that we're up, the radios we're upgrading. Uh, well, it's just, it, it's, it's, it's uh prolonged, I mean, it's, as, as long as they will live. Um, our, our, our radio batteries, the new radios, the new radio batteries, um, we've gotten, uh, we could get up to twenty years out of. Um, so, um.
Our, our current radios are, they're, they're starting to go, that's why in the past years, my radio capital had five hundred thou- uh, had five thousand dollars in there. To start doing repairs and replacements of the existing radios that we bought back in two thousand.
I'm just trying to get an understanding of how. You know, right now, there's a hundred grand, give or take, in each of your departments for this upgrade and you're saying the total need is three hundred, I'm just trying to get in.
All right, so, so basically.
I did what we would expect to see, the, the remaining one hundred thousand, is it five years from now, is it ten years from now?
It might be less than five years, but this is just to get us up to where we should be and not kill the taxpayers with a, a huge financial burden, so. This is just to get us where we can talk to other towns.
So this will buy us five, so this will buy us five years?
At least.
Okay, that, that's the answer I was looking for, okay, thank you.
Any other capital before I go to my operating?
Any other capital questions? Okay, I don't see anybody having questions, so we'll move on to your operational budget then, chief.
Uh, operational for the most part, it's, it's a zero percent with the exception of the contractual uh ups that we had to put in. Um, uh, full-time contract, uh, two hundred fifty-one thousand, that's contractual. Uh, you'll see my part-timers did go up, that's because we do have a lack of volunteers, they're not coming in the door. And at this point, it would be irresponsible of us not to have a firefighter in the firehouse twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, the volunteers just aren't here anymore, it's, we're doing our best campaigning and. I, I don't, at this point, I don't know what else to do to bring members in, um, it's, it's sad, it's upsetting, but. We, we still have a service to provide to the town and, like I said, it would be irresponsible not to staff those additional hours. Um, I can tell you right now that when we put the nighttime staff on, uh, that those firefighters that were staffed, uh, paid for by the ambulance. Um, the staffed hours, from the time somebody called nine-one-one to the time we left, I'm sorry, not. To the time that the nine-one-one center told us that there was a call, to the time we left, it took a minute and forty-five seconds. With the unstaffed hours were over three minutes, so total time was staffed here, it took five, five minutes to get to the emergency. With no staff here, it took almost ten minutes for people to get out of bed, drive to the firehouse, get the apparatus and go. Once we staff those overnight hours, uh, we went from, it's, you were still around a minute from the time that we got the notification to, to leave. And it, then it dropped to the exact same thing for when we put the overnight hours on, um, and then our overnight time of call went down to the exact time of uh. During the daytime for total time from the time we get notified to the time we get to the scene, so we've already seen a. A save, uh, uh, time savings with having staffed overnight firefighters, so it, it needs to be done around the clock. And it's, we're only putting our residents at risk if we don't do it. Um, going down the line, uh, overtime increase contractually, you'll see my longevity went down, um, I had. Uh, full-timer retired, so he doesn't have, we don't have to pay that full longevity anymore. OSHA vehicle maintenance is the same, my radio maintenance, I originally made it seven thousand, because I took that five thousand that wasn't capital and moved it into my radio. Um, the board of selectmen cut that two thousand dollars down to five, which that still covers me fixing the current radios that we have. Battery-wise and whatnot, when, if or whether we do or don't get the capital money for the new radios, I still need to maintain the ones we have. Uh, my building maintenance is zero, my small equipment's zero, my training is still at zero. Uh, telephones, the fuels have been picked up by the ambulance, my uniforms did go up because of the contractual obligation for the full-timers. And my miscellaneous is stated zero, and a projected revenue of just shy of eighty thousand dollars from the ambulance for that additional full-time firefighter.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? On the operational budget? Any questions? On Department Two Eighteen?
I, I don't have a question, Camille, but I just have a comment, I think, uh, thanks again for the tour of the facility. Uh, because it answered a lot of questions, I think, um, and I know some others have. Uh, I didn't get to see Niantic uh fire uh facilities, but uh, uh, I'll do it another year, but um. Uh, definitely, the added information just uh makes it so much easier uh reading your budget, your operating budget, so thank you, thanks for that.
I appreciate all the board members who did come out to take the time to kind of understand the things that we do and what we have in the building, so when we come to meetings like this and we speak of something. You're not trying to figure out what I'm even talking about, you've seen it and you know how it works, so it, it was definitely a plus.
Okay. All right, very good, all right, thank you both very much, um, let's move on to Department Two Twenty Four, the Fire Marshal.
Our, our Fire Marshal's here, I don't know if all of you have been introduced to him, John Way is, you've, you've seen his mug all day there, sitting there waiting. Patiently for his, his turn at it, very patient and uh hours later, uh, John, uh, John Way is here and uh he's um. Uh, newest, newest uh department head, I guess, John, and he brings a wealth of um experience with him. And has um, uh, already started to revamp the department um in a direction it needed to go in, so. Uh, John, uh, you have your budget in front of you, you can highlight just a few things that you might want to point out that are, are different and then let these folks. Um, um, have any questions they might have, they'd be able to ask you, so go, go for it, John.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone, um, just starting with the, the CIP. Um, with the separation of Fire Marshal Emergency Management, I can't speak to the radio maintenance or radio system questions. Um, it's probably a Bill Shear question. Um, in regards to the, the two Scott Air Packs, um, the uh, the amount of money that's in that account is not needed. Um, we do currently have two air packs, um, just a regular routine maintenance would be needed for that, so that money is um, can be taken out of the account. And then also, under vehicle acquisition, uh, looks like in twenty-five, twenty-six, um, may purchase a, purchase of a future vehicle for the uh. Deputy Fire Marshals, um, that might be something to work with the town going forward, maybe to use a um. From a public works vehicle or something rather than purchasing new, but um, as we get closer to that, we can re, we can take a look at that. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Um, actually, Camille, if I may, the, the funds that are in that emergency management capital improvement plan, that's actually the amount. To pay prior year um acquisition plan obligation, so those funds will need to stay in the budget. And we'll talk about that when we get to Department Seven Twenty Four.
Okay, paying for prior year obligations. Okay. Then we definitely have no questions on that, so we'll move on to the operational side of the budget.
Okay, in the account, um, obviously, the uh account for the part-time Fire Marshals, um, as you know, I'm the only full-time person. Um, my short, short time in town and doing inspections, um, we're going forward with that, I've found that, um. We do have a requirement through the state to get in almost every building every year. Um, and we're finding during the inspections that it also gonna require a second inspection, we do find violations. As well as sometimes a third, we are working with the business owners to get those corrected. Um, and also with the large projects like Gateway, um, we've been there, um, almost forty inspections since uh February. And uh, we're up there at least two to three days a week. If, if any of the committees available, I know that the Chief Rex had spoke about this, about, he had the tour, um, if anyone's available from your office to uh, to go to Gateway. Um, we can uh kind of show you what we do up there in conjunction with the building department. Um, conducting life safety inspections, uh, even with the COVID, the um construction was considered essential. And with that, um, between three and four hours you're spent going through each building, um, looking at fire stopping, fire blocking. Looking at the um sprinkler system that's being put in, um, a lot of times we have to stay ahead of the contractors because as they, um, they're moving very quickly. They need to install certain protection because the sprinkler piping they're using now is plastic. And they have what they have to install, it's called nail plates, to prevent somebody from drilling a hole into them, um, once everything is constructed. Along with that is also uh fire blocking or fire stopping to limit fire spread um from one unit to another. Um, some of these units are eight and twelve, um, houses that actually put together, so we have to maintain, make sure that they have proper separation. Also, conducting testing, once the buildings are completed, we go through and ensure that the um smoke detectors. Um, sound is um a certain level of each pillow, and also that the sprinkler systems will operate as designed. Before anything is turned over or before anyone lives in them. Um, as well as going forward, um, the first phase of Gateway requires an annual inspection. Which means we go to every apartment and we check to make sure each of the smoked, smoke alarms is in working order. And also that their door um closes and latches to keep them safe. Um, along with that is uh report writing, uh, once we do an inspection, we have to come back and uh make the appropriate documentation, code research. And then get back to uh and do a follow-up inspection, um, sometimes it requires a third inspection, um, and hope don't have to do that, but it does, uh. Sometimes it does occur. Um, I don't have any, if you have any questions on that particular subject or anything else, I can um explain further if needed.
Any questions for the Fire Marshal or the detail in his budget? Any questions? Okay, we're letting him off way too easy. All right, with that, I guess we have none, so thank you for your time and as Mark said, thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you and uh I look forward to working with you in the future.
Okay, very good, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, that completes what we absolutely have to get covered today, so. With fifteen minutes of despair or so, I think we're doing really well.
Yeah.
So why don't we push on and just try to tackle a few more of the. with fifteen minutes of despair or so, I think we're doing really well. So why don't we push on and just try to tackle a few more of these departments that are on our agenda? Uh, because that would mean that would be less to do on Monday night. Should we just go right down the list? Is that what you recommend, Mark Nickerson?
I have, I might have a different order than you. Um, I'm not, so so tell me what's next on your list.
You.
Good.
The selectmen's office.
I know that one real good. Let's see. Um, don't, I'm gonna need Anna to help on this, Anna, so stay tuned. I think the postage is uh is something I'm gonna fall back on on that. Um, as you as 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 you see, the the budget is um a lot of salary. Um, the everything else is kind of like flat. I'll I'll answer any questions in the um in the recommendations to the board of finance. We did uh, I'm I'm taking reduction in my salary to make it an even a hundred thousand, cutting out six thousand. Uh, ad hoc committees were cutting out twenty five hundred dollars. And the postage budget, um, we're taking out six thousand dollars. Um, there's a uh, there's some savings built in there. We think um it has to do with the tax bills and and also the postage meters being able to be filled, you know, be prior to June thirtieth, so therefore it'd be savings next year. But it's pretty, pretty much a straightforward budget as it is every year. Any questions?
So does everybody, I, yeah, so the first selectman suggested reductions to the budget based on the board of selectmen are uh the six thousand sixty five dollars for the first selectman's salary, one thousand dollars for the ad hoc committees, six thousand dollars for postage. So if you're looking at your budget books, that would be thirteen thousand sixty five dollars less than what you see in the budget book, which pretty much comes to a flat budget. So does anybody have any questions for the first selectman on his budget?
I I just want to make a comment, but uh, Mark, if I recall, that's not the first time you've reduced the first selectman's salary, and I think that should be noted. That you've you've done that before. You've reduced the first man, first selectman's salary before.
Yeah, I, we don't need to belabor it. It is what it is. I, there was a, there was a thinking that the first selectman should be the highest paid person in town and and um it, when I came into office, that was the case and it was keeping pace. But, you know, frankly, um, these career guys that are here for for a career um and 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 have master's degrees in some of the things they do, probably deserve that where I'm a, I'm a temp, right? Uh, first of all, second of all, there is a, there is a, there is a feeling among the board of selectmen that we do need to pay the first selectman a significant salary to attract future first selectmen. Uh, I'm fortunate enough to have a business and this is a secondary income. Um, you know, I but we need to keep up the the salaries because other people may come into this job and have to give up a career to go into this career. So um, even though it'll be a temp. So thank you for pointing it out. It's it is um, it is a, it's an honor to serve and um and the the salary is significant. Um, nothing to sneeze at, but um, but yeah, I, you know what, when I'm sitting at that table and I'm asking every department to give back blood, I can't not do it myself. Uh, you know, and I'm not asking for their salaries. Again, this is their career they're bringing, but but they are sacrificing. When we're making cuts, I mean, they 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 have a lot of pride in their departments and you know it and you see it and you hear it, and then you see the results around town. I I I don't feel good about going to a Joe Brigah or or Dave Putnam or any of the first responders you heard today and say, I need I need you to come in lower and lower and lower and without without taking a hit myself. And that's, again, the third time I've done that, but um yeah, it it feels like it's a a balance that way. So thank you, Peter, for bringing it up.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Or comments? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to the next department, which is judge of probate department one eleven.
This is Anna and all Anna, because she handles this. Now, I keep in mind that probate is the old uh it's your police station, if you go back twenty years. It's the the small building that sits in our parking lot. We are the host of the of the probate court for, is it four towns, Anna?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we're the host, we collect the bills and then we divide it out, kind of like that animal control bill that we divided by the right amount and we send the bills out. So there's a revenue stream that comes in here as well. But Anna, why don't you go through this budget if there's anything to go over?
Okay, so um it it's just one line item. That's the the town of Eastline responsibility for the um total budget. There is um another document in your books and it it goes over all the different um line items, if you will, in the budget, um includes um probate operating supplies. So what that is is um, the probate office, um, they have um needs for office supplies, and so that's what that thirteen thousand five hundred funds. Custodial fees, our custodians actually go and clean that building weekly and that's the annual cost. And if you remember when you looked at, um, when we were doing the department one thirteen budget, there's a a revenue that's that's noted there as well. We also purchase supply uh supplies for the building and for the grounds maintenance. There's heating oil, electric electricity. There's a water bill for that for that building. There are some service contracts which includes um pest control and alarm monitoring. There's also the telephone bill. That's copier maintenance. Um, we have lease copiers and that's their share for the copy machine that they have in their building. Copy paper, when they they use copy paper that's here at the town hall, every time they take paper, they have to record it so that we know how much to bill them. And then we also put up a contingency for um things that might come up relative to that building that we didn't plan for. And then there's um a formula um based on statutes and the way it works out is lime pays for thirty seven point nine percent of the budget, old lime fourteen point six. Montville um is actually the highest at thirty nine point three percent, and then Salem is billed for eight point one percent. So we bill um each of the towns annually and then um Eastline pays its share, which is um the sixteen one seventy seven for next year's budget. This is set up as um, the probate fund is set up as a separate fund in our um accounting system. It's actually fund nineteen. So all of the, you know, like all of these budget accounts that I went over, when whenever there's expenses, it's charged there.
Anybody have any questions for Anna on the judge of probate department? Ain't no questions. I just have a few, Anna. If you look at the detail, it footnote number four says increased heating oil based upon historical annual expenditure. So I would question, again, that's one of those areas where I would have expected to see a big decrease in that particular line item. Um, in addition to that, I am wondering, what are the allocation percentages based on? So we're we're hosting actually this building in Eastline, um, and we're getting um just slightly less of a charge than Montville. What are those percentages based on? Based on population?
Yes, population.
Based on the population that the uh Ledge Light Help District puts out those numbers?
The state of Connecticut, uh, but they generally run the same numbers, correct?
Okay.
There's an official state population that we all base everything off of.
Okay. And how much is in the special revenue fund?
Anna.
Um, so actually so um so it's, so the way it's set up is I have it set up um doing due tos and and due that one, when um there are any charges, the fund owes the general fund. And then when we actually receive the revenues from the other town, the general fund owes it to the fund. Um, and actually, um, so as of last fiscal year, as a result of historical operations, there's about a twenty three thousand dollar fund balance. So if you recall, when we did the upgrade to the HVA system, HVAC system, we um, you know, used funds from from that um particular fund balance.
H back to that specific building, we
Yes, they needed
the revenue. Okay.
We needed a new, um, you know, like a a capital improvement, if you will. So we used um that source of funds.
Okay. Right. So if our heating bill for that building is half of what it is, then the excess, the savings, if you will, would roll into this special revenue fund, correct?
That's correct. That's correct, yes. Um, so this fiscal year to date, we've expended about twenty six hundred dollars, and I'm not sure if we've topped off the tank there yet. So the four thousand was um you know, a number that's based on um historical averages, you know, um in that building.
Right. So we could probably reduce that there and provide a little bit of relief to these other towns too at the same time, correct?
So what I could do is, what I'd like to do is I'd like to go back and look at all of the prior here year histories because, for example, if we've typically expended closer to that four thousand dollar um limit, if we make a reduction in next year's budget, it it may, um, we may not have enough to pay for the heat.
Well, we could cover it with the twenty three thousand dollar balance in the special fund, and if that's the case, then we know to increase the budget next year.
Um, well, that's certainly
A possibility, okay.
Possibility.
You know, a and and I know it's not a significant chunk of change. It's, you know, the percentage increase in the budget is just a real focal point for a lot of people. And anything we can do to try to trim that, I think, would be well received and appreciated based on everything we're going on. So probably I just stated my board comment now. I jumped ahead of the game a little bit, but that that's why I'm asking that question. Okay, so probably no more questions on the um probate department. Is that correct? Very good. All right, let's move on then. We are making great time. A general government and well, actually, let me point out, it's twelve fifty six. I do have some questions for the general government and miscellaneous that may, that could be like a ten-minute
It's a big conversation. It's a big budget for sure.
It is, it is. So we can skip maybe to services to community if that would be the board's desire, because that would probably be just a couple of minutes and then maybe close the meeting out for the day. Is everybody amenable to that? Raise your hand. Okay, great. Let's go to services to the community, one fifteen.
Um, you'll you'll notice on your um your um budget reduction sheet, there were several uh reductions that we made from the sheet that from the from the budget you have in front of you, we've did, we've deducted and made suggestions for deductions to the Eastline beautification of a thousand dollars. The Eastline Veterans Memorial Day, um they called um and said they're not having a Memorial Day party uh parade this year, and they would hold their money till next year. Um, so we could reduce of uh one hundred percent um of their of their funding next year. But they don't want to be forgotten the year after. So we got to remember that, you know, they are gifting that back, or if you will, they're holding that and volunteered that money to um to to hold that. Uh, the Main Street program for this one year has has said because of what's going on in the economy, they would give up their two thousand dollar stipend, um, as well as the Brian Dagel Foundation. Again, these are organizations that said, listen, the economy's bad. We know that the board of finance has a very big, big job on their hands to try to make this budget as low as possible. They're giving that up for this one year. We don't want to take them off the list next year. We want to remember them, but remember what they gifted back to the town. So that said, everything else is um is on there, and I think it's pretty much status quo. Uh, groups like the Family Services Association, the second one on your list, homeless shelter, they're always asking for more money, the vet, uh, the uh, I think the um TVCCA, they're they're always asking for more more money. They serve more in our community than you'll know. Um, and they're they're, of course, their expenses are going up and we maintain a a flat line year after year. But this is what we're proposing is is delivering these these uh funds. We moved some money around. We took some money off the historical society and moved it up to the cemeteries. They are woefully short. Uh, the cemetery group, I uh, they made a presentation, the board of selectmen, they maintain something like over a dozen small little cemeteries in town with very little funding. And um, I think that's, I think that's about it. Uh, I'm available for questions if there are any of these. This is kind of a feel-good department uh that we review.
Any questions or comments for Mark Nickerson or for um the public at large? I guess I would just have one comment. I mean, I I do have some concerns with cutting back on a couple of these areas because I think some of them will be in a greater need this year based on what's going on with the COVID nineteen. You've got a lot of shelter in place going on and um we heard previously incidents of perhaps domestic violence going up, which is a terrible fallout from this. So anybody that's reviewing this particular meeting and looking at this particular budget, if we move forward with these reductions to these areas, I would just hope and make a plea to those listening out there or watching this tape at a later date that if you haven't been affected by the COVID nineteen, maybe these are some organizations that would be worthy of your consideration for gift giving. That's the only comment I have.
So we had had safe futures on the list and we've replenished that. You might be working off an an older list. Everything else, um, we're voluntarily uh give backs, uh, beautification, vets, Main Street and Brian Dagel Foundation, Brian Dagel being the only real organization that is giving in a in a social services kind of way, but again, they have some other funding. So everything else I think is is we are supporting, we haven't cut back.
Very good. Thanks for that. Any other questions? Comment?
I, can I just ask the board, um, the list of the board of selectmen suggested reductions, what what's the total dollar amount that you have on yours? At the bottom.
Three hundred, the the, okay, so the suggested reduction to the original adopted budget is three hundred twelve thousand five hundred forty four dollars.
Okay, so you have the correct latest one. I just wanted
I do, I do. I, does everybody have this particular document?
I think um that there was some confusion earlier in our um our session today where there was a an April twenty first version, and then when the board of selectmen met again, there were, there were a couple more changes.
We moved things around. We put some things in, we took some things
It's April twenty seventh version.
This was the April twenty first version.
Yeah, yeah. So do you have the April twenty, I I want to make sure that all the board members have the um April twenty seventh version.
Is that something you emailed out?
I would have, yes.
Yes.
You know what?
Okay, I'll look for it.
Yeah. If you don't have it, um, I can certainly email it to all of you. I just want to make sure that you have the most all of you.
I actually don't remember if you emailed that to us or if that was included in one of our packets.
Actually, I, I have it because it looks like it was the I don't know if you sent it in, but it's the board of selectmen minutes of the April twenty meeting, so it's attached.
Why don't you send it out again, Anna, before their Monday meeting? I sent it out Monday morning, just just so they have a fresh
Send it out Monday morning, just, just so they have a fresh copy.
I just want to make sure they all have the right copy.
Yeah, let's, let's just send an extra copy, just to make sure.
Anna, there, there was one line, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the fifth line from the bottom, it looks like there's two things from the Park and Field Maintenance that are the same account number, and the second one where it's 36567 with a reduction of 2501 to 34066. That looked like it was last year's budget.
No, so what happened is when Mark asked the departments for areas where they felt they could make reductions in their budget, when Dave Putnam submitted his suggestions for Parks and Rec, he had like option 1, 2, and 3, and so when.
I took option 1 and 2.
Yeah, Mark selected for this, yeah.
Yeah, I just saw that the revised number is the same as what the BOS is for the second item. Okay, so options 1 and 2, thank you.
Well, yeah, yeah, I cut them twice instead of cutting them once and it is what it is.
I guess he should do it twice and cut once.
Okay, it is now 1:05, I think we've made great progress today. I still encourage if there's, after you go back and rehash everything that we discussed today, if there's additional questions, please feel free to reach out to any of the guest panelists that were here today directly, if you need further clarification. The next time we come together, we'll be on Monday night to cover the remaining departments. We'll plan on putting and maybe a revised agenda out, so we know exactly what departments will be talking about on Monday night. And so with that, I'm going, I'm going to move on to Agenda Item 3, Board Comments. And we'll just go around the board to see if anybody has any comments at this time or if everybody's done and just ready to move on.
I have one, yeah.
Yes, Anne?
Yeah, good session today, we got through a lot of information, so that's, that's very helpful, looking forward to Monday. I just wanted to ask if we would have at least a bit of time on Monday to review revenue. I think last year, we actually put it in, in the agenda as a discussion item or as an item, agenda item. And I was thinking, not just because we had done it last year, but it is important in general, but also because if there are any, you know, changes that Anna has or Mark suggests, whatever, you know, that, what, either because of savings or other expenses, whatever, however this calculus is done, but I do.
Right, right.
We need to take a, a, a close look at it, if there's any year we're gonna look at revenue, it's gonna be this year.
That, that's an excellent question, Anne, I mean, and I don't think it's been posted yet, but we have a regular meeting scheduled for the Board of Finance on Wednesday, May 13th, and that is, the discussion of the revenues will happen during that Wednesday night meeting, just prior to us beginning deliberations. So, so that's probably gonna be a long night on Wednesday, because we have some housekeeping to do, a special request for appropriation. We'll review the revenues Wednesday, May 13th, right? Correct, Anna Johnson?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's gonna be put on the Wednesday agenda, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, any sneak preview for Monday?
Is it permissible for me to make a comment?
Yes, I, I think so, I think so.
So at this point, I've, I just have two revenue accounts that I'm going to make suggestions for reductions. One of them is in the current year interest in liens account, because as I was, you know, just thinking things out, the deferment grace period option that we took, what I did is I went back and I looked for the history over the last five years on what we collected in the months of August and September for interest on the current taxes, and it was about 25,000, 27,000. So I was going to recommend that the board make a reduction there. And then in the Building Department, the building official had proposed fee increases to the Board of Selectmen of about 5%. So I'm going to recommend that we lower that revenue protection by 5% as well. So the combined two of them are about 50,000. The other, and I did speak to the building official again, because I was concerned that his revenue projection would be too high, you know, relative to the economy and all things, because back in the 2007, 8, 9 recession period, that was the one local revenue where we did see a drop back on. My, looking at that prior period of time, I think everything else pretty much stayed rather, you know, in line with the projections. So those were the only two that I was going to recommend reductions on. I did check with Mary Anna at the Board of Ed to make sure that their tuition projection was still a good number and she assured me, yes, it was. So those are the only two reductions that I was planning to make to the board.
I will, I will say too, that I believe the Board of Finance has the ability to make recommendations to those revenue numbers, but in a normal budget year, if that were to go to referendum and it failed, we, we do not have the ability to change revenues if a budget does not pass. Maybe Mark Nickerson, can you confirm that?
I don't know, because I've never experienced that. It's been a whole long time since there was a budget failure, go back 14, 15 years. It would be, it would be a charter issue and we could explore that, but well, we don't need to explore, we can't have a referendum this year, so, but it's a good point, it's a good point, Camille, so we gotta make sure, we gotta make sure both sides of ledger tight and, and, you know, we'll spend a whole long time on the, on the expense side, but you're right, the revenue side needs to be accurate as well.
Are there any other board members that would like to make a comment before we close out this afternoon? Yes, Anne Chakalo?
I just wanted to thank everybody who participated today, all the people who came and talked about their budgets, it was very informative, and I just wanted to just thank everybody for that.
Very good. Okay, if there's no further comments, thank you for that, Anne. If there's no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Rich Steele moves to adjourn, is there a second? Anne Santoro seconds, all those in favor? I?
I.
I opposed, abstain, very good. Have a good weekend, everybody, thanks, thanks again to everyone for participating today. We'll see you on Monday night.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Bye.